Okay.
Good, we're good.
Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. The Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the Township Council in the following manner: notifying the Township Clerk, December 27, 2024; mailing notice to the Courier-Post, Central Record, Ambrota County Times, on December 27, 2024; posting notice on the official Municipal Bolton Board on December 27, 2024. Board agendas, meeting minutes, planning and zoning information, and application forms can be downloaded from the Township website under the Planning and Zoning page. Notes: Anyone from the public wishing to speak will be permitted during the public participation portions. Those wishing to speak should step up to the microphones, state their name and their address prior to making any comment. The agenda has been posted on the Township website and Bolton Board in the municipal building. Please place all phones on mute to alleviate disruptions of the meeting. Thank you. Susan, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Calerico here. Deputy Mayor, present.
Present.
Ms. Rafka.
Here.
Mr. Reeves.
Here.
Ms. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Bruce.
Here.
Mr. Bertel.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mancello.
Here.
Chairman Fletcher.
Here. Thank you. Renee, you'll be a voting member this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. With Renee and Franwell. I'll be stepping out as a voting member since I'll be taking.
Thank you both. Okay. New business: 380 South Linola Road, Block 189, Lot 4.02, Friendly Greens LLC, application number PB-25-06, Zone, Business Development Zone, BD, existing use, vacant bank, proposed use, retail cannabis shop, application, change of use. Please step up to the table and the microphone, please.
You have a preference?
Anywhere you like. They're comfortable.
Thank you for the table. I'm going to start with that because I don't get to sit often.
You want to swear a little bit?
Uh, yeah, let's give her a minute.
All right. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Lynn Walters. I'm a partner at the law firm of Neiman Davis &amp; Goldstein. We're counsel for Friendly Greens LLC. As mentioned by the chairman, the property, subject property is 380 South Linola Road, Block 189, Lot 4.02 on your tax map. It's located north of the intersection of Linola Road and Route 38. Fully developed site, designed and previously operated as a bank with drive-through lanes. It's located, as noted in the BD Business Development Zone, where retail cannabis is a conditionally permitted use. We're here seeking conditional use approval as a result of that, as well as minor site plan approval to allow the old bank building to be rehabilitated into a retail cannabis store. Testimony and exhibits will demonstrate compliance with the conditional use standards pursuant to Section 67 of the Municipal Land Use Law. Therefore, conditional use approval is required and was requested. The existing building and site is in good condition, so we're not proposing many changes along the site. Therefore, we've also sought minor site plan approval. The Township previously has authorized three retailers as part of its ordinance, three cannabis retailers, and the applicant was the first to receive a resolution of support from Township Council. We understand the applicant is the first cannabis retailer you're seeing before the board as well. So, we're going to take a little bit of time, give you some general background on cannabis retail in New Jersey and the status of the applicant's licensing process with the CRC. And of course, if approved, that license would be supplied, and a business license from the Township under the cannabis ordinance also would be sought. Just for housekeeping purposes, for purposes of the record, the application was filed on May 30, 2025. We weren't asked to appear before your Site Plan Review Advisory Board. We weren't scheduled there, so we have not been there. I note that was a comment in Mr. Torek's report, but that's the reason why. Instead, we were given tonight as a hearing date. So, we did notice for tonight's hearing in the Courier-Post. Notice was published on July 11 and mailed to property owners within 200 feet on that date, both within Maple Shade and in the adjoining municipality of Morristown. And proof of publication and service of notice was sent to the Board Administrator by letter dated July 16, delivered July 17. All materials in support of the application, except the hearing exhibits we're going to share with you tonight, have been on file at least 10 days prior to the meeting. As such, we submit the Planning Board has jurisdiction to hear the application this evening. I have for you some handouts. We have four witnesses that I'm going to identify. What we've done is we put together a handout packet. It contains a witness and exhibit list, identifying the project information, our witnesses, and all the exhibits we intend to introduce. Also has 11 by 17 color copies of all those exhibits. We will have them mounted on boards, but these handouts are for the board members for ease of reference. Sometimes it's not easy to see details from far away. So, if you would like me, if you would, give me just a second. I'd like to pass those around. There's about 19 in there, so any extras I'll take back and I'll put out for the, any members of the public who might be interested in the application. So, our witnesses tonight include Brian Atkins, our site civil engineer, Russell, known as Rusty Cookta. He's the applicant's consultant and applicant representative for the presentation. Mr. Nathan Mosley, our traffic engineer, and Stephen Hulk, our professional planner. And we're going to start with the site itself, and we're going to bring Mr. Atkins up to sort of go over existing and proposed conditions. And then we'll move into, we'll bring Mr. Cookta up, and we're going to move into some background on cannabis licensing and retail operations in New Jersey, and specifically operations that are intended for this site.
Any preference on easel location?
Yeah, the side would be fine.
Thank you.
Hi, T. How you doing, sir?
All right. If we could please swear, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, please raise your hand. Do you swear from the testimony you have to give? Will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do.
Thank you. So, Mr. Atkins, would you please state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Sure. My name is Brian Atkins, last name A-T-K-I-N-S. I'm a partner at SR3 Engineers in Belmar, New Jersey.
And you're a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey, correct?
I am.
Would you please provide the board the benefit of your education and experience in the field?
Yes. I have my bachelor's and master's degree from Rowan University. I've been practicing engineer, practicing engineer in the state of New Jersey for nearly 25 years, and have been a licensed engineer in the state for nearly 20. And I've appeared in front of, represented multiple applications in front of multiple boards within Burlington Town, Burlington County, and throughout the state.
Have you ever provided testimony before this particular board?
Not this particular board.
Okay. But multiple other boards, other boards in the state of New Jersey where you've provided testimony? Have you been qualified as an expert in the field of civil engineering?
I have.
I submit, Mr. Atkins, as an expert in the field of engineering. Thank you. All right, Brian. So, we have a couple of exhibits. I don't know, Mr. Sullivan, if you would like to mark the witness and exhibit list itself, A1?
Uh, yes, that's fine.
Okay. So, the first exhibit, the next exhibit in that packet is an existing aerial plan, which Mr. Atkins has mounted behind me. We're going to refer to that first and then move on to the site plan render after that. So, if we could mark that existing aerial plan as A2, and then, Mr. Atkins, if you would just identify it by date and title over there?
Yes. The plan entitled Existing Aerial Plan, dated July 21, 2025.
Thank you. So, can you use that exhibit to, to explain to the board, basically, orient the board to the project site and its existing conditions and surrounding area?
Sure. This existing aerial plan shows a aerial of the site, has the site outlined in yellow here. It is located on South Linola Road. It's directly across from the old Pmart Shopping Center, where there's currently some vacant buildings, the stacks on 38. It's directly to the east of the PJ Wheelhands over here, to the, to the, I'm sorry, to the west of PJ Wheelhands, to the east of a couple medical office buildings. Behind it is a storage, public storage, storage unit center. And, you know, that's mainly the surrounding areas. And as you get up, there's the, there's the AK Shopping Center up the road of Linola a little farther.
Sue, if you would use that aerial and describe to the board the size, shape of the property, and they can, what is currently existing on site?
Sure. So, as mentioned, the yellow outlines the existing area. It's approximately 2.09 acres. The 2.09 acres in this case, and it's a note Mr. Torek's letter, does include some portion that is to the center line of the right-of-way. The practical acreage of the site is 1.9 acres. Existing site has access off South Linola Road, right-in, right-out access at the main driveway, right-out only, at the egress. Existing parking and circulation around the site. The site currently has 18 parking spaces, one handicap space, and then four striped drive-through lanes in the back with one bypass. The site has existing sidewalk, existing lighting around the site, existing light poles, some existing landscape, as well as a monument sign, and sign it on the front of the building.
With respect to bulk criteria in the ordinance, in the BD ordinance, meaning lot size, lot width, the site generally complies with most of those, correct? There's one existing non-conformity?
Uh, it does. It does generally comply with both. The one existing non-conformity, which in discussion with Mr. Torek, may or may not apply here, depending on how it's defined, would be lot width, 125 feet, minimum lot width is required. The lot is 200 feet, or nearly 200 feet at the front, the right-of-way, but near the back, it goes down to about 117 feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, it came off. If we could go through it now. Under our code, it's a little loose with regard to width and how it's defined. I did find linear lot width in our definition, and it's defined as the width of the lot at the right-of-way. In that case, it would be, as Mr. Atkins pointed out, 200 feet. It's rarely at the back of the property. It's typically at the building setback line. So, from my perspective, as long as the attorney is in agreement, I don't see that there's a variance required.
Okay. Thank you.
Otherwise, lot is conforming with the, with all the required building setbacks and impervious coverage. In fact, as you can see by the neighboring buildings around it, there's a 40-foot setback here. This building is setback nearly, setback over 100 feet from the right-of-way of South Linola Road. In addition, the impervious coverage, 75% of the level in the zone, and it is 48.7%.
Okay. So, that covers what we currently have on site. Would you now please walk the board through what's being proposed by way of our minor site plan?
Just to clarify, is this remaining A2, or do you want this to be A3?
We're going to switch to the next page, Minor Site Plan, and please mark that A3.
A3, okay.
So, Brian, if you could just identify that document by date and title?
Yeah. Title is Minor Site Plan. Date is July 21, 2025. And this is a color-rendered version of the site plan that is in, was in our submission package.
Great. All right. So, if you, you mentioned we have 18 existing parking spaces. If you could just walk through the changes. I know a lot of that relates to parking and some other site-related changes?
Correct. So, the primary site-related changes involve some restriping and stretching additional parking. So, for example, there are existing 20-foot-deep bays in front of the site and behind. The existing ADA parking is non-compliant with current standards. So, we're striping in two ADA spaces and an appropriate van-accessible aisle, providing appropriate signage, and providing appropriate ramp in the concrete area there for the landing. We're additionally providing the make-ready EV spaces, which are required by New Jersey State law. Only one would be required for the site. We usually have it two because it's a little, that law is a little fuzzy about whether one should be, whether you should only stripe, because it has to be handicap accessible, so we usually like to make it so one of them is, one of the handicap accessible can also use the EV space and one normal EV space. So, we're restriping the stalls in that area, restriping, there were four stalls in the back, restriping those to add a 12.8 by 20-foot loading zone in the back door. And then in addition to that, adding in the area of the, in the area of the drive-through aisle, we don't need all the width of the drive-through, striping in eight additional spaces in the rear of the site. As well as adding sidewalk from those spaces to get to the use of the lot on-site. And currently, the sidewalk is pinched by the back corner of the building in its current configuration. So, we narrowed the, the west aisle width to 20 feet to allow for a appropriate sidewalk, wide sidewalk to the front of the building. This also includes pavement, pavement and concrete repairs where necessary, resealing, need to asphalt paving, and then restriping all the directional arrows, stop bars, putting an appropriate traffic signage at the ingress entrance.
With respect to the existing condition, the existing tree line that's in the back in the previously undisturbed area, we don't propose to disturb anything within that area, correct?
That is correct. The approximate, the rear approximately 30,000 feet of the site is undeveloped, undisturbed area, and there was a portion of it that at some point was maintained as some lawn area, but otherwise is otherwise undisturbed. So, we're not proposing any disturbance or any new disturbance or new impervious surface down there.
And we're not changing the building footprint or otherwise changing the exterior of the building, correct?
No, there's no proposed changes to the building.
Okay. With respect to the existing landscaping in that wooded area in the back, we've seen the report from Mr. Torek. We're going to work with him to supplement existing landscaping. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah. We had some comments about supplementing some of the front and side landscaping, as well as some work in the rear there.
And we'll.
We agree to those comments.
Okay. And we'll work with him to satisfy his questions and comments regarding lighting as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see a trash enclosure proposed. Could you please briefly explain to the board why we don't have a trash enclosure?
We don't have a trash enclosure. There was formerly a pad in the back of the record removing that I think the dumpster used to sit on. Trash for this business would maybe be explained later in testimony. Trash is typically handled internally with smaller bins. There's private hauler that would pick it up weekly or as needed, and those bins would be wheeled out at the time that that haul is on-site, and then picked up and wheeled back into the building.
So, that's why we don't have a trash enclosure. And we do have another witness. We'll give more testimony on that process. All right. And then with respect to utilities, the site's currently serviced by public water and public sewer, correct?
It is.
We don't propose any changes to those connections or to that usage?
No, no, we don't propose any changes to the current utility connections.
All right. Well, we'll talk to the utilities, Utilities Authority or Department, and make sure that we give them whatever they need for change of use, correct?
Right. It is the change of use paper.
Okay. And then existing electrical service comes from overhead wire, overhead wires between this site and the adjoining site, correct?
Yes.
And we don't propose any changes there as well?
That is correct.
Could you please explain to the board briefly how the current stormwater runoff is handled through the site and what our proposal is there?
Sure. Currently, the majority of the site flows overland. Approximately rate, rate is approximately in the middle of the building, so everything to the front runs overland out south of Linola Road. Everything in the rear runs to what looks to be an old, a, what would be a bubbler or irrigation inlet in the back, potentially attached to a French train. It was time of survey and time of site investigation, the results of the fog. And obviously, we agreed to clean it out, fog it, investigate it, and make sure that it is maintained appropriately.
And since we're not proposing any disturbance of land greater than an acre or more than 20, a quarter acre of new parking surface area, this does not qualify as major development pursuant to DEP, correct?
That is correct. It does not qualify to meet the current DEP standards for stormwater.
Okay. But that being said, we're well under the impervious coverage. I think you mentioned it before. 75% is permitted, and we're under 50%, correct?
Yes. One of the stated impervious coverage and the proposed improvements don't, do not have any change in coverage. There's actually a very slight minor decrease, but it's mostly even with the current, with current impervious coverage on the site.
Okay. So, let's talk quickly, if we can flip to the next page, which we, I'd like to mark. A4. It's the elevations and sign sheet that was provided with the application. You have that for us? Great. If we could, Mr. Sullivan, mark this as A4. So, I'm just asking you to talk to this, to talk about the sign, the building-mounted signage, since we're on site plan details, talk about the signage real quick. So, we, there's an existing building-mounted sign and an existing pole-mounted freestanding sign, correct?
That is correct.
And this demonstrates that we're merely looking to reface them in their current location and size?
That's correct.
All right. And did you have an opportunity to compare the signs that are, as they exist, to the current code requirements regarding what's permitted by way of size and location of signs?
I did. The monument signs in the zone for the organs are allowed to be, the sites allow one monument sign, maximum height 20 feet, maximum square footage of, based on frontage, but with this site's frontage, it maxes out at 50 square feet. The approximate size of the monument sign currently, or freestanding sign currently on-site is about, is in the, about 40 square feet. It's about 4 by 10.
And so, we're just going to reface that. We're not increasing the size. So, the intent is to remain compliant with the.
That is correct.
The sign requirement.
And also, I would mention the height is, the height was surveyed at about 16 feet. So, it's also below the height requirement.
Great. And then for the building-mounted sign, what's the, what's permitted there?
Building-mounted sign is permitted to be, it's permitted of one sign facing the street, which is that this sign faces the street, frontage here, faces Linola Road. The sign is allowed to be 10% of the building facade area. The building facade, based on the, the architecture, not, conservatively not counting the canopy section, just the building portion, is, is just over 1,000 square feet, which means it would be allowed a sign of up to 100 square feet. The sign as existing out there is approximately 3 by 20, so it's about 60 square feet. So, if you're facing it, it would be under, it would be allowed to be.
Great. And those signs are both proposed to be internally illuminated, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. With respect to, that, that's really all we have with respect to site changes. Before we're done with Mr. Atkins, just want to confirm, outside agencies, we applied to Burlington County for a certificate of exemption, and that was granted. A letter of no interest basically was issued on June 6, so we'll provide a copy of that with our compliance package. And then Soil Conservation District, do you expect the need for a soil conservation certification, or do you anticipate we'll be seeking a waiver?
We may be under a waiver based on the disturbance there, but either way, we will be contacting them and either getting a letter confirming a waiver or a soil conservation permit.
Okay. And the only other outside agencies that technically have jurisdiction would be CRC and the Township Council for appropriate business licenses from both agencies. So, finally, we, we've received Mr. Torek's report dated July 17. I think we've noted that we're going to work with Mr. Torek on the landscaping and the lighting, and we've addressed some of his other comments as well. Let's go to the one issue, just the one comment regarding the width of the bypass lane. So, as the site currently existed, when you entered the site, there was a two-way traffic circulation until you reached the edge, the entrance to the drive-through, correct?
Correct. And I'll refer back to the, to the existing aerial plan. It was generally two-way circulation, two-way circulation until you reach the canopy space in the rear, which is where the one-way circulation from the drive-through started.
So, on our proposed site plan that we submitted, we indicated we were going to change the site circulation to be full one-way circulation?
Uh, one-way circulation start, we moved the one-way circulation up, not full one-way, but we moved it up to the building just because we were narrowing that a little bit.
Okay. And in reviewing the report and the considerations presented by Mr. Torek, are we proposing any changes to the, are we going to extend that two-way back to where it was before?
Yes, we are. Yes, we, Mr. Torek took the exception to have, to forcing this rear traffic to use the bypass lane. So, minimum two-way aisle width without parking is 20 feet, which is what we showed there. So, we would, we would extend this two-way back to the start of the drive-through.
And those parking. And those parking spaces in the rear, we're going to have testimony later, will be for employees. So, that, there will be minimal interference at that location, correct?
Right. And it would be, all the parking, including those employees, would be in a two-way area anyway. So, they also would be able to, they would not be forced to go outside.
Okay. So, essentially, the site circulation is going to continue to operate the way it's always operated, with the exception of the new parking in the rear, which will continue that two-way circulation from that point, correct?
Correct.
To the front. Okay.
Correct. It'll actually be more two-way than it was because the drive-through lanes are shorter.
And you did reach out to the fire official, correct?
I did.
He's on vacation?
That's my, that's my understanding. We coordinated with Mr. Torek. That's my understanding. We said we'd, we reached out via phone, and I offered something.
So, we'll talk to him when he gets back next week and go over the, the site. I mean, it, it's a previously approved and developed site, presumably constructed in accordance with prior approvals, and it's always operated in its current condition. So, it, then we don't propose to intensify the, the use of the site. The drive-through use isn't changing from what it was designed or intended for. So, we don't really see any concerns forthcoming from the fire official regarding the ability for the fire truck to. from the fire official regarding the ability for the fire truck to maneuver the site as it would have in the past, since the site's been developed this way, but we'll talk to him and make sure he's comfortable. And we'll agree to do that as a condition of approval. And since we're no longer proposing true one-way circulation throughout the site, then I believe the waiver variance that Mr. Torek called out for that bypass lane not being 15 feet wide, I think that goes away. I think the report indicated that's triggered only when that bypass, that it's one-way circulation.
Mr. Chairman, shall I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Brian, you just mentioned about a two-way driveway, minimum width of 20 feet. Our code says 90-degree parking is 25 feet for a two-way drive-through.
That is correct, but there's no two-way, there's no parking on that stretch. So all the, all of the, all where there is two-way parking, it is 25-foot minimum. All where there is, the location where there is parking.
Can you point out the location where you mentioned the 20 feet?
Specifically just along the edge of the...
And there's no parking between there and the side yard in that location?
Correct. The, the same section that notes what the minimum one-way width is, it's the same as the, where the parallel spaces would be noted in that section, which notes it at 15 feet one-way. That same section notes it at 20 feet two-way for parallel spaces. There's no spaces here at all, but it's, that's where that's...
So, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have not seen this plan, so this was revised, I guess, two days ago, correct?
No, actually, we were discussing it today in response to your comment.
Right, I'm just saying. I have not seen this, so I'm trying to figure it out as we're sitting.
Right, right, yeah. But I, yeah, I would note, to your point, just to confirm on the record, the existing two-way aisles here are 25 feet, this existing aisle there is also 25 feet of two-way parking, and we have more than 25 feet of the proposed space in the rear. That is closer to 35 feet in fact, just because of how long, how wide that area is in the first place.
Fred, anything else?
No, I just wanted to get the parking out of the way.
Chair, we have a question from one of the board members?
Yes, sir.
First of all, are you comfortable, having seen this for the first time, reporting to us about it?
I can't advise you, but I'm just taking, I'm just listening and trying to understand.
Okay, thanks. So on this, there's a little number on that parking lot, and this is in A2. A2. You're looking at...
No, you got it right.
Is that, what's that little number? Is that a five? In the parking, it's in one of the parking stalls, or...
Oh, I think, you know, that's, honestly, that's an error with the...
No, that's okay, I just want, you see it, right?
It's a, it's a, it's a three, you talk about the ones in the rear?
Yeah, I just want you to, yeah, you see it.
So this is just an aerial of the site, and that's just...
Can I finish? Can I finish? I'm just trying to get him so I can answer a question. You see the spot, right?
Yes.
Okay. So those parking spots, is that, that's the one-way?
Currently, that is not, currently, that is not.
What's your plan? Your plan is to make it two-way. There, my understanding is when you come in, it's one-way.
It's not.
Currently, it is not, currently, it is two-way all the way beyond those stalls up until this point where the drive-through starts.
And then, from your panel, is it one-way?
We, right, we had showed that one-way extended here, we're proposing to not do that anymore.
Have it two-way until you get to the, whatever there's things are...
Have the same intent, have the one-way not start until the beginning of the drive-through lane.
I just was trying to understand, that's why I wanted to make sure he saw that little, whatever, there's a three or a dot, whatever.
Right.
Coming in, can you, and I'm bad with giving directions, but coming from, say, the Acme, coming down to NOLA, you'd make a right into the, into the building, right?
Correct.
Now, if you're coming the other way, from PJ, you say, right? Can you make a left into the, into the property?
You can make a left, and in fact, there is a left, the existing wino or the stripe is a left in there.
Okay, so you can go both ways. Leaving the property, you have to go right?
Leaving the property is right on.
Right on, okay, thanks. The EV charging spaces, silly question, but I don't have any EV, but will they have charging at those spaces?
So eventually, the state requires that they be, what the state considers make-ready at the time of site plan, so...
So you may not put them in until later?
Right, correct. They'll go in within the time required by law, which is basically two years.
Okay. The, what do you need a bypass for?
We're just calling, it existed, it's an existing bypass, which just means that as it operates its bank, if you were going in this direction and you didn't want to use any of the drive-through, you weren't actually going to the teller.
Right.
This has no teller.
Well, you don't need, do you need, you don't need a bi, a bi, a bypass?
We, the use does propose using some of those, some of those drive-through spaces, so...
For what? Or is that somebody else?
We're going to give you testimonies to how that's going to be used, but the intention is to utilize the drive-through lanes. For pickup of mobile orders only, and we'll give details on that.
Like a brew-through in North Carolina?
I've never been to a brew-through.
Huh, really?
Well, you can't drink and drive, so I don't know what that is.
Well, you can drive-through and pick-up. All right, so there's going to be, I think, I saw something in Fred's letter about that. If that's not approved, I would like to come back to Mr. Atkins and understand how leaving those pillars there in what's essentially a parking lot would impact the site and safety of the site. But I understand you're going to ask to, you may believe that you have a right to use those, I don't know, you don't have to, you don't have to tell me that now, I don't want to get ahead of your presentation.
It's fine, we can have that discussion.
We can have Mr. Atkins come back, and I can ask him, you know, about potential safety issues, appearances, and just having columns in the middle of a parking lot.
It's a canopied drive-through, so it's not, there's one lane on the outside, can we go back to the aerial? So as you can see on A2, it's a canopied drive-through. There are four drive-through lanes, including the window, which is the lane closest to the bank building, and then one, two, three more drive-through lanes, and then the bypass lane. So it's all existing, and we're just proposing to leave it as it is.
I understand, I understand. And if you get your way, whether by right or by the decision of this board, obviously the drive-through lanes make sense. But if you, if you can't use those lanes for drive-through business, I'd like to have a discussion with Mr. Atkins, what we can do with that. Because it doesn't make sense to me to have drive-through lanes on a property that's not using it.
So the drive... Yeah, no, no, it's fine, we can talk about the face-to-face requirement in the ordinance. So your ordinance is set up, you have two different sections that deal, well, two different sections that primarily deal with cannabis. One is cannabis zoning, and the other is cannabis licensing. When the governing body adopted the ordinance, they put a bunch of requirements or requirements and guidelines or regulations in effect in, for the applicant for a business license to demonstrate to the governing body to obtain a business license. Some of those requirements carried, were carried over into the conditional use standards. So those items that were carried over into the, into the conditional use standards, we're going to demonstrate to you that we satisfy those items tonight, as we need to, to obtain a conditional use approval pursuant to Section 67 of the Municipal Land Use Law. But the items that were not carried over into your zoning code remain solely within the jurisdiction of council to look at at the time a business license is applied for. So one of the things that was not carried over into the conditional use standards is the face-to-face requirement. That is not a zoning issue for this board, that's for council to consider when the applicant applies for their business license. So we don't need a use variance, even though we propose it, and there'll be testimony from the next witness regarding operations, is going to indicate exactly how those lanes are intended to be used, with live video screens, direct communication, face-to-face, with a human inside the building. Therefore, we're going to take the position and request council to allow us to use those lanes with that face-to-face being met. It doesn't say in person, it doesn't say physical touch, it just says face-to-face, and with screens, we can accomplish that. That is the intent.
It's an interesting argument, but, but you're saying that we don't really have, that's not our jurisdiction?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not part of the zoning code.
We'll see what happens with that.
It's not part of the zoning code. Yeah, I had a discussion with Mr. Sullivan about it, and statutory interpretation is pretty clear here. There's a business licensing chapter that's not this board's jurisdiction, and there's the zoning code which is. So we'll demonstrate compliance with the zoning code.
All right, thanks.
Could I just add to that just real quickly? The items that you referenced in 2024-07, the actual ordinance that adopted cannabis...
We're not picking it.
Okay, sorry. The actual ordinance, 2024-07, that identified the 20 regulations, that several of them or seven of them have been picked up and made into condition of approval in Chapter 205-114. 205-114 says A, item number A, or letter A. Such facilities shall meet all of the requirements for licensure by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. So that's where I was thrown off when it said it must meet all of the requirements. So again, I don't have a...
Or licensure by the C, by the, by the CRC. Doesn't say it must meet all the requirements for licensure by the township, it says it must meet all the requirements for licensure by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. And our witness will demonstrate how the site does meet that.
Fred, you know, maybe you want to hear the rest of the presentation, but do you agree with, I'm sorry, Ms. Walters? Do you agree with Ms. Walters that the ordinance doesn't require face-to-face?
My position is that, and again, I'm not legal counsel, but my position is that there are regulations that are required. There are 20 items in there as requirements.
Is that in your letter?
I'm sorry.
Is that in your letter?
Yes, we've identified them. We did not identify them as conditions for conditional use because they're not in the ordinance, Section 205-114, but they still are regulations of cannabis use in the township made shape, so that's what I've identified. I'm not saying they're conditional, conditions of a conditional use, I'm saying they're regulations that are adopted in our ordinance.
But that ordinance was implemented into the township code in two ways, through the business licensing chapter, Chapter 114, and through the zoning code, through 205-114, which is the portion of the code that we're dealing with here tonight. The part of the ordinance that was implemented and codified into Chapter 114, the cannabis licensing, that remains Township Council jurisdiction. So, and we, so we have to demonstrate to Township Council that what we're intending meets the purpose and intent of the requirement for face-to-face. We do have to demonstrate that to council.
Do you agree with Fred that the regulations are part of our ordinance? Or do you disagree with him?
The regulations are implemented in your ordinance in two different places.
Right.
So the place, the regulations that apply to the board here were implemented into the zoning code. The remainder of those regulations, yes, they're regulations, but they're requirements for business licensing, which this board does not do.
So, so the portion of the regulations have not gotten to the zoning code that we have jurisdiction of, your site?
That, that is one of the several regular, regular requirements for business licensing that did not end up in the zoning code, that's correct. And...
I would also just agree with, I would agree with her interpretation, Ms. Walters' interpretation. Her and I spoke about this earlier. It seems to be that the way the, it was, the code is split into two different sections as she's described, and this face-to-face looks like it is not a conditional use or something the planning board necessarily can approve or not approve. It does look like it would go back to the Township Council. Now, I don't know if that was the intent of the Township Council at the time, and maybe that deserves a larger review at that level, but as it stands right now for this applicant tonight, I would agree with Ms. Walters' interpretation.
Did anyone print the ordinance by?
I have them both in front of me, if you'd like to see them. You can have my copies, I can print more, they're saved in the computer.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to get ahead of you. Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is from Mr. Atkins. Is there any cross-access to the other properties, cross-access?
There, no, there's no...
Do you plan on anything like that? On this proposal, okay.
Okay, all right, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. There are no other questions for Mr. Atkins, and I'm going to bring up Mr. Kupta.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Atkins?
Good evening. Do you swear from the testimony given tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and address for the record.
Russell Kupta, 6565 Sawturn Drive, McEngee, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kupta, you're the owner and operator of KindBuds, correct?
Yes.
KindBuds is a cannabis consulting company?
Yes.
So in that capacity, as a cannabis consulting company, you've owned, consulted, and invested in a dozen or more New Jersey dispensaries, correct?
Yes.
As well as dispensaries and, or retail stores, cannabis retail stores in other states?
Yes.
And you've worked with many different companies and investors, companies like Friendly Greens, to help facilitate those, your CRC licensing and local land use approvals?
Yes.
So you're familiar with the process, with both the CRC licensing process and the land use process, correct?
Yes.
What do you do by trade?
I'm a pharmacist by trade.
Okay. Licensed in Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Okay. So as part of the consulting work you do through KindBuds, you've been involved in multiple CRC licensing applications?
Yes.
And there's currently one pending for Friendly Greens, correct?
Correct.
We'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. So as a result of all that experience, you have knowledge of CRC licensing requirements?
Yes.
For class five licensing, there's two different levels, right? There's a conditional and an annual license?
Yes.
And there's two ways to go about that. You can either apply for a cannabis conditional license and then later reply to convert to an annual, or you can just apply right for an annual, correct?
Correct.
And the distinction between the two largely based on where you're at with your local process, correct?
Correct.
So for a conditional license, you need a resolution of support from the local municipality and a zoning verification letter, but not necessarily site control and a site-approved design.
Yes.
And for licensing, for the annual license, you require the resolution of support, the zoning verification letter, and then local board approval for a specific site, correct?
Yes.
In addition to that, CRC collects standard operating procedures, correct? As part of your application package?
Yes.
And those standard operating procedures, they touch on things like, sorry, noise, odor, security concern, security controls, community interaction, community benefits, things like that?
Yes.
Okay. And you've written and participated in writing standard operating procedures for CRC licenses for many of the licenses that you've helped procure?
Yes.
And that process, when you apply, here, I think you've applied, Friendly Greens has applied straight for an annual license, correct?
Yes.
All right, and you're in the middle of that process?
More towards the end.
Okay. So the process for annual licensing, submitted application, CRC does its background check, does an interview with their applicant, conducts, eventually conducts an inspection of the site to confirm security layout and security plans are in place according to what they've approved, correct?
Yes.
Then they'll confirm local approvals are in hand and eventually issue a license, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so Friendly Greens has applied for an annual license, submitted an application, they've done their investigation, and you've got interviews scheduled?
They were already done.
Interviews have been completed, great. So really, it's just a matter of getting an approval from this board, hopefully, tonight, getting the site ready and having them inspect the security cameras and security package on site so they can issue their approval?
Yes.
And that approval comes by way of CRC approval at a CRC meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
CRC meets monthly?
Yes.
So it would be your hope that if approved here tonight and a resolution is adopted at the next board meeting, hopefully, you're through your CRC process shortly thereafter and have a license in hand soon.
Yes.
But because of all your experience with CRC licensing and the CRC requirements for cannabis retail sites, you're familiar enough to be able to provide operational testimony for Friendly Greens and confirm that, you know, whether you believe this testimony for Friendly Greens and confirm that, you know, whether you believe this site will meet all of the licensing requirements, correct?
Yes.
So let's talk about that a little bit. Let's get into operations. You're familiar with the project site, correct?
Yes.
You've been in the building and around the site, so you're familiar with the, what's current, what exists on-site right now?
Several times.
Okay. And you're consulting with Friendly Greens on how it's going to be operated in the, correct?
Yes.
All right. So let's talk about some typical operation testimony any applicant would provide to a board, and we will have some kind of a specific information in there, too. Your proposed hours of operation, the ordinance has limitations, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but permits that seven days a week. You're aware of that?
Yes.
All right. So you fully intend, you fully agree to operate solely within the permitted hours, correct?
Yes.
And do you anticipate they will be 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
No, probably more like 10:00 to 10:00, or 10:00 to 9:00, something like that.
Okay. But we will never exceed the permissible hours of operation?
Correct.
How many employees will you have, will there be on-site? Or in total, I'm sorry, in total?
Probably about 10.
And that includes managers and security staff?
Yes.
Okay. And how many employees do you think would be on-site at any given time?
Depending on the volume, probably like four or five.
Okay. And on average, five?
Yes.
Say, okay. And employees, they come on-site about no more than an hour before the store opens and depart within about an hour after closing?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just for opening and closing procedures that aren't, where the site's not otherwise open to the public, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's walk the board through a typical customer experience. We have a floor plan up on the board, and you can use this one if you want to just use that, you can.
No.
Yeah. If the board doesn't mind, there is a floor plan up on the board, but it's also the next page in your packet, and if we could mark that, I believe we're on A6?
A5.
A5?
Yes.
Thank you. I do lose track over time. Okay. So this floor plan in front of you, you were involved with the architect in preparing the floor plan layout, correct?
Yes.
Was it your intention to utilize as much of the existing floor plan as possible?
Yes.
So minimize interior fit-out time and construction?
We, yeah, we're hardly changing anything.
Okay. So just for floor plan, floor plan overview, can you just give a brief description of what you see when you come in the building?
So you'll come in the vestibule like it is right now, and to the left, there will be a receptionist that, to the left there, checking IDs and admitting people into the dispensary.
So the building in, are the doors into the sales floor remain closed until the customer is verified that they're at twenty, at least 21 years old?
Correct.
With valid ID? Okay. So then they're buzzed and let into the sales floor, correct?
Yes.
All right. So when you come into the sales floor, what would you find?
There will be display cases. Well, to the left here, there, around the wall, there will be keypads or like what Sherilyn's having, where you could actually place an order. There will be a bud tender that'll be walking the floor to help if anyone has any questions. They can place their order there. If they've already placed an online order, there will be a separate pickup for online orders, you know, kind of like at a pharmacy, you have a drop-off and a pickup, but there will be like two lines, basically.
So you come in, if you're, if you've pre-ordered online, you've been given a window of time to show up to pick up your pack, your order?
Yes.
But you still, when you come in, even for preorder, you have to be age-verified before you're allowed to go in to pick up your preorder, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then at, once an order is placed, either through a bud tender on the floor, at the kiosk, or if they're coming in to pick up a preorder, they go to the point-of-sale stations?
Yes, point-of-sale.
Which is basically the counter where the tellers used to sit?
Yes.
Okay. And at that point-of-sale station, that's when the transaction is completed?
Yes.
And once the transaction is completed, describe, once the order is placed, what happens? How does the product get packaged up for the customer?
Okay, so it'll be, the order will be entered, and it'll go back to the vault and intake order staging, like right, like that area right there. It'll be filled, and then there's those three doors that, little windows that'll actually be handed, the product will actually be handed into where the tellers are standing and be given to the patient.
Or customer.
Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, I know. Still, still working on that. Okay. So it's face-to-face in the lobby, it's face-to-face on the sales floor, and the ultimate conducting of the transaction is face-to-face at the point-of-sale counter, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And pre, we, we're going to come back to the pre-orders and the other method for pickup in the drive-thru in a minute, but, well, actually, let's just talk about that now. So you mentioned that there will be an ability to preorder online, correct?
Yes.
If, when somebody pre-orders online, is the order paid for online, or does that have to occur in person?
It's paid for online.
It's paid for online. So they're coming in to verify their ID and verify their transaction and then pick up the product that they've paid for?
Yes.
So they can do that inside, as you've indicated, and we're also, you heard us talking a little bit before, we're also contemplating or hoping to use the drive-thru, existing drive-thru lanes for preorder pickup as well, correct?
It'll be no different than like a pharmacy.
Okay. So you, you pull up, are you, we, in order to facilitate that face-to-face communication in the drive-thru, you're anticipating, or planning to add lifetime video screens to each lane, correct?
Yes.
Except the first lane where there'll be face-to-face with what would have been a teller but is now a bud tender. Okay. And so if I order, pre-ordered online, I want to come through the drive-thru, I'm given a window of time, I drive around, I go to the drive-thru, the screen pops, sees me and pops up, and I tell them who I am, what I'm there for, correct?
Yes.
All right. Then they're going to ask me for my ID, I'm going to send them my ID so they can verify?
Yes.
And then once ID is verified, since the transaction has already been paid for online, the bud tender who you're talking to on the screen will send back the ID and the purchased product, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And online ordering is now industry standard for cannabis retail in New Jersey, is it not?
Yes.
And, and since you do cannabis retail, facilitate cannabis retail in other states, is that pretty common all over?
In the recreational states, yes.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go now, that's, that's like your typical customer experience. So let's talk about deliveries and cash pickups, and then we'll get to waste and, yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can anybody else pick up the order other than the person who purchased it online?
No.
I have a question.
Yes.
I see that your ID when they walk in the vestibule, are they ID'd again, once again, they go up to the bud dispenser?
Yes.
So they got to show their ID a second time, prove that they're the person there?
Yeah, that's part of the metric system. You basically have to ID them twice.
So let's talk about that, C, the metric system, M-E-T-R-C, correct?
Yes.
That's the state's system for tracking cannabis product in, in New Jersey?
Correct.
And basically, New Jersey employs, what they refer to, or what the industry refers to, is a seed-to-sale program, correct?
Yes.
So that means at the time a seed is planted, it's provided an RFID number? And that RFID number is trapped, is kept with that seed through plant, through harvest, through product creation and packaging, through delivery to the ultimate retailer, and then scanned one more time at the, at the point-of-sale, correct?
Yes.
So New Jersey is tracking every plant that goes into soil from the time it goes into the soil to the time the product is delivered to the customer?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that's manifested. So when he, when Mr. Kohta mentions metric, that's what he, he's intending, or what he's meaning. Okay. So we're going to talk a little bit about how that, you know, how the product gets delivered and then manifested into metric when it first gets here. So where do, where does a cannabis retailer in New Jersey procure their product from?
A distribution or wholesaler.
Which is also a licensed class of cannabis licensing in New Jersey, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So there's six classes, just, I'm sure the board's aware, but for background, it's six classes of licenses in New Jersey. Class one is cultivation, class two is manufacturing, class three is distribution, class four is wholesale, class five is retail, and class six is transport, is basically delivery transportation. There's also separate, I do this a lot, there's, there's also independent testing labs that the state authorizes to do testing of cannabis product before it hits a customer. That wouldn't be at this level, that's before it gets to cannabis retail, but it's, as it's being manufactured, there's, and the plants are growing, there's routine testing that's required to make sure the plants are healthy, there's no disease, to make sure the product maintains the appropriate levels of THC, which are permitted by, which is permitted by the state. There's a max that's allowed in every product. So that all happens prior, well outside of what's before you this evening, but just so you have a global picture. All right. So you're purchasing, the Friendly Greens is going to purchase its product from a cannabis distributor or wholesaler, they're going to deliver it to the site, correct?
Yes.
All right. And on the site plan, we show a stripe delivery area, this is A3, just real quick for reference, we show a stripe loading area?
Yes.
Directly behind the north side of the building, correct?
Yes.
I think Brian indicated that was about 12.8 feet by 20 feet. So what type of vehicles actually bring the product in?
They're usually undisciplined Sprinter vans, like an Amazon van, something like that. An Amazon van would be like the biggest one. It's usually sometimes even cars from the smaller wholesalers.
Okay. So they're going to bring their delivery to that loading space, correct?
Yes.
And then if you go back to the floor plan, they're going to enter the back door, which is top right of the pa, of the floor plan on the page, correct?
Yes.
All right. So they enter with the product, and where do they take it from there?
So they take it, there's a little counter right there, right outside the vault, that's where they would like check in the order, just to make sure that we got all the products that they said they would.
Okay. So basically, there's a manifest that's associated with each delivery. An employee will verify the delivery, the products being delivered match the manifest, correct? All right. So once that's completed, the delivery driver leaves?
Yes.
And then where does the product go from there?
It goes, after it's entered into the metric system and put, placed in the vault.
Okay. So the delivery driver never has access to the vault, correct?
Correct.
All right. And the products are delivered in sealed packages and transported in sealed containers?
Yes.
Okay.
Are the deliveries during business hours when security is on-site?
Yes. What they do is they do random, like there's, it's not one set time, they do random deliveries for security.
Right, so it's not this pattern?
Yeah, it's not like 10 o'clock every morning, it's like 10 to 8, I mean, or whenever we're open. We don't take deliveries when we're not open.
I guess there's a buzzer that they have to get, to get access in, because it's, I imagine it's a buzzer that they have to open at all times, it's not just a regular?
Exactly.
Okay. So the product, so now we've gotten to the point where the product's been delivered, it's been, the, the manifest for delivery has been checked, it's been taken into the vault, it's been manifested in metric, so the state knows that it's on-site. So now I'm a customer, I've come in, I've placed an order, what, how does the product get from the vault to my hands as a customer?
Okay, once it goes in and the order's entered into the system, there will be printers back at the order staging and vault area that basically we fill from the vault, and then there's a wall, I don't know if you guys can see it, but it's like three little, like to the left of the intake, that's where we would hand the orders through the wall, basically.
And that's to the consultants or bud tenders that are within the point-of-sale area?
Yeah, so someone gets assigned to each area, so just for security reasons, like someone will be working the vault for the day, someone will be working the, for the customers for the day, or, you know, like certain shifts.
Okay. So that's basically what we call pick and pack, correct?
Yes.
All right. Order is placed, it's picked and packed out of the vault, and then handed off to the consultant or ten, bud tender or employee that's making the transaction, finalizing the transaction?
Yeah. One thing I just want to mention, out on the sales floor, there might be like dummy bags, but they're all empty. There are no product actually that the customer could see, touch, grab, steal, anything. It's all like dummy bags, or it looks like a product. So everything that is real product is kept away from the customer.
And that's consistent with CRC regulations?
Yes.
Okay. And while we're on deliveries, there's also presumably, at some points in time, cash pickup?
Yes.
All right. And the, the cash pickup will be made through that rear door as well, correct?
Yes.
And you use a third-party vendor for that?
Yes.
There's actually third-party vendors that specialize with cash carrying for cannabis retail, correct?
I'm looking at her name, yeah, there's a few.
Yeah, your, your name is close, yeah.
Yeah. One of them is called Tellar, Tellar.
Tellaria?
Tellaria.
Tellaria. And the other one's called MP Real.
Yeah.
So they're, they drive vehicles similar to what GARDA, a GARDA cash truck would be, correct?
Yes.
All right. And so they come in, when pickups needed, they're led in the back door, where, and then the cash will be, the, whatever they're, they're taking off-site will be ready for them to pick up, correct?
Correct.
They just take it back out to the truck, just like they did when it was a bank with a vault, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And because they're GARDA-type trucks, they're also going to fit in that loading space in the back, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I've got the weirdest glare, sorry. All right. So let's talk about the big, the big-ticket items for cannabis. Every, every time I do one of these hearings, the three questions, security, noise, and odor, okay? So we're going to go through all three of those. So building security, so there's two types of security, correct? Building security and security personnel? So let's talk about building security first. Building security involves camera system, correct?
Yes.
And they're strategically placed in accordance with CRC regulations to capture everything inside the building?
Yes.
Except for bathrooms, where they're not permitted? And 360 degrees outside the building as well, correct?
Yes.
So every, every space on, in, on the property that, that is developed and utilized has to have camera coverage?
Yes.
All right. And that camera system, it's monitored on-site and off-site?
Yes. Twenty, we have cameras there, and it's monitored in Pennsauken also. We actually, interesting fact is we added a lot more cameras than the banquet had, so.
So the, your security plan with the cameras is actually more intensive than what, what existed with the bank?
Yes.
Okay. Then there's a security alarm that provides protection against theft and diversion of product, correct?
Yes.
As, as well as monitoring the cameras? And if that security alarm is triggered, who gets notified?
The, the police, and we do also.
Okay. And does the CRC get notified as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Those systems are supported by a backup system, correct?
Yes.
So if there's a loss of power, that backup system automatically, automatically picks up?
Yes.
And automatically issues electronic notification as well, correct?
Yes.
To the state, the local police, and to you?
Yes.
To the operator, okay. And those cameras, we indicate they're monitored offsite, but that's 24/7, 365 days a year, correct?
Yes.
And footage is kept for the minimum of 30 days pursuant to CRC guidelines?
Yes.
And we're, you know, the, the operator will work with the police department regarding the security plan and will continually coordinate so they are familiar with the security personnel?
Yes.
And they'll also have access to that security footage as, anytime they request, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the footage, let's talk about onsite, onsite security. You know, what, what will the security team, how many members will be assigned for the security team?
One at a time usually, and will actually be unarmed.
Okay, so you're going to have one unarmed security personnel onsite, those security personnel are specifically trained, correct?
Yes.
And typically of the background of retired or active military or police?
Yes, usually.
Okay, in addition to the onsite security staff, you're going to have, or personnel, you're going to have certain employees that also are trained to monitor the site, both for security, but also for site cleanliness and maintenance?
Yes, we'll have someone watching the cameras and there are silent alarms all over the place.
All right, and they'll be monitoring the cameras to make sure that there's no onsite consumption in the parking lot, which is not permitted by the CRC and is also prohibited by the local ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So, but they'll also monitor and walk the site periodically?
Yes.
Someone will between the designated person, employees and the security personnel will also walk the site periodically, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So with respect to waste, it's always a bit, that's another big question, and we're going to segue into that a little bit now too, while we're talking about it. Cannabis, we've indicated where it's stored, how it's inventoried, we've gone through that, but what ha, are there times when a cannabis product has to be disposed of other than by means of sale to a customer?
Yeah, like a recall or something, but the product usually goes back to the manufacturer.
Okay.
But if it is required to be disposed of, it has to be like totally unusable, mixed like with kitty litter, chopped up and stuff where like no one would notice that it's cannabis.
And that's a process that's required by CRC, correct? And basically, I think the language is, has to be rendered irrecoverable, unrecognizable, and useless for diversion.
Yes.
Because of the technical terms from the CRC. So the destroy, any cannabis that has to be destroyed onsite would be basically anything that's beyond its expiration or use-by date, or destroyed by other means. Say there's a fire, or there's a water leak that somehow impacts problem, correct?
Correct.
All right, and and while that's not anticipated in most instances because the product's in a vault, you know, you never know when you might have a water event that that might cause a problem. So when that is required, that destruction in accordance with CRC requirement happens onsite, and then that destroyed material is now rendered inert due to mixing it with other inert material, correct?
Yes.
That's stored onsite until picked up by a authorized transporter, correct?
Or you can put it directly into the trash because it's
Right.
Those words you said.
So it's, it's already been rendered useless?
Yes.
For diversion, and CRC does authorize that mixed inert bag to be thrown away in the regular trash? Okay, if the product is, gets recalled from, through your distributor or wholesaler, in that case, does the product go back to the distributor and wholesaler?
Yes.
And they take care of the destruction in accordance with CRC requirements, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so that's cannabis storage and disposal. So while we're talking about disposal, general trash and recycling, you may have heard the conversation I had with Brian a little earlier that, you know, we're not providing a trash enclosure onsite. He indicated that trash would be maintained in the building. So typical trash from a cannabis retail store, since you're not putting ordinarily cannabis product, you're not going to dispose of that in the trash. It's just trash associated with the employees being onsite, bathroom, kitchen?
Yeah, it's like a general office because all the products that you get are the form in which it's sold, so there's really no waste. We don't get them in boxes or anything, we get them in totes, we take them out, so there's really no boxes. It's kind of like a convenience store or those types of products.
So for that reason, you're proposing basically 96-gallon rollout containers, correct? And so they'll be stored inside the, the?
The top right corner room, where the HVAC is.
Correct, the word I was looking for is escaping me at the moment, but, so there'll be the two containers, one for trash, one for recycling?
Yes.
All right, and then you'll have a private hauler come and and take those out on a regular basis as needed, correct?
Correct.
How often do you anticipate that would be?
Probably once a week.
And you would schedule that so that it doesn't coincide with any peak hours of operation?
Correct.
Okay. And then once it's empty, they get rolled back in and put the, put back inside the mechanical room?
Yeah.
That's the word I was looking for. All right, so then the other two big-ticket items that we need to talk about real quick, odor. I mentioned earlier, and you confirmed products are delivered in vacuum sealed containers, in vacuum sealed packages and in sealed containers, correct?
Yes.
So they sit in the vault, and then they're sold in those same vacuum sealed packages, correct?
Correct.
So odor inside the building is fairly minimal, cannabis-related odor?
Yes.
And you treat that or deal with that through up-to-date and modern carbon filtration systems?
Correct.
So there's really no noticeable cannabis odor inside the building and none to, none that would be ready to escape the building, correct?
Correct.
All right, so no noticeable impact to your neighbors, it's not like manuf, it's not like cultivation, that's where, really when, when you smell the product.
I should have been listening more because that's the part I really wanted to hear.
We can repeat it for you. Yeah, so I mean?
Are you going to be imbibing, I mean, I guess that's what you're saying, right?
No.
In the building?
Not permitted.
So you're not smoking, so there's no smoke odor?
Or outside, you're not allowed to do it anywhere on the premises.
Correct.
That's good enough.
Correct. And then noise, this is really a retail use similar to a pharmacy or another retail use, correct?
Yes.
So most of your noise is inside with the customers, the drive-through is going to operate very similar to how it operated when it was a bank, so nothing new there?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have like restaurant music, I mean, nothing crazy.
And, you know, so, so there's no real change in the noise impact from this use as compared to the bank use?
Correct.
Okay, so based upon the operational testimony that you've provided, based upon your experience, and also based upon your experience as a cannabis consultant doing this multiple times in New Jersey, is it your experienced opinion that the facility, as you described it, will meet all the requirements for licensure from CRC?
Yes.
And you do, you are, as you indicated, already going through that process with CRC, you foresee no issues there?
Correct.
And typically when CRC flags a problem, they flag it at the time of background check and then vet it through the interview, correct? And if, okay, so if you get through the interview process and and they're, you know, they give you a notice that they're ready to inspect when you're ready, pretty much as long as the security package is in place, the way it's been designed and approved by CRC through the earlier part of the process, it's really just satisfying them and then getting your license, correct?
Yes.
All right, so you, do you believe that Friendly Greens ultimately will be approved by CRC in the not-too-distant future?
Yes.
Assuming an approval here tonight.
Do you have an endorsement from the C, Cannabis Advisory Board?
So that had to be done before we came here. Your ordinance?
You have it.
Correct, so we, the, on May 23rd, 2024, the governing body issued a resolution of support, Resolution 2024-R-101. And in that, they issued their support for this cannabis, for Friendly Greens to operate at this site, and that resolution also references that the applicant had met with, already met with the Cannabis Advisory Board, and the Cannabis Advisory Board had issued a letter recommending to council that they issue the resolution of support. So that's been completed, we also have a zoning verification letter, both of those were in the application packet.
Can I just follow up on that real quick? That endorsement that you have from this local authority, do you have that available, and does that identify all these regulations that were required?
I do have, it, it was in the application package, the resolution that I just identified. It, it does, at that level, the, the council is not approving a business license. All they're doing is issuing resolution of support so that the applicant can move forward with an application to CRC for a license.
The issue that came up, someone wrote up about the face-to-face?
It's not mentioned in the resolution at all.
Was that discussed where the screens will be, the soundboards, that, that's more of a site issue, and that's why I'm asking, how is that going to be handled?
Did you have a discussion during the Cannabis Advisory Board meeting?
Yes, we, we basically said that we wanted to do a drive-through and the Cannabis Advisory Committee did not have a problem with that.
But I guess the question is, how do you go about that?
Well, at the time of?
Where is the screen, where is the speaker box, I mean, this?
Well, the speaker box exists because it was a drive-through.
Yes.
Right.
There's, there's actually, we're getting a video, I'm not sure I'm understanding your question. We're getting a video board that's actually, call it upgrading, because right now, like if you go to a pharmacy and you're, I just treat like a pharmacy because I'm a pharmacist, but if you go there, you're, you could either see the person through the first window. We're actually putting a TV screen where we can see them, or not a TV screen, but a, a video camera.
Right, my, my question is, what regulation requires?
There is none with the CRC, so there's other cannabis dispensaries which I've advised for that don't even have the camera. They just basically can see the person, and there's drive-throughs, the other one that we do?
That's not the case here, you're proposing four drive-throughs, so you could not see the person in the car, right?
From the outside drive-through lanes, that's why we're indicating, yeah, screens would be installed?
Yeah.
To facilitate that face-to-face communication.
And those islands are what, two feet wide or something, so I'm just asking how, I want to make sure it doesn't impact the drive-through. What are these, are these just narrow, like a screen or?
No, it's a, just a video, that, they won't see us, we'll see them.
Now, the physical equipment that you're installing in this 18-inch island, what, what is it, how wide is it?
It's about like that, it's a camera.
And it's installed on a pole or?
It's, it's, it's like, you know how you do the chute for the drive-through? It's literally sitting on top of that. It will not affect any.
Will it protrude, will it protrude into the drive area where vehicles are pulling through?
No, no, it's just sitting on, it's, it'll look like her Stanley cup, just the top part of it on the top of a.
So consistent with a bank that they do now?
Yes, it's, we're using the same equipment that they had, but we're upgrading the, the camera.
And, and that will be shown at the time of business license application of the governing body, the details on what that looks like will be provided to the governing body, they're going to want to know, they're going to want to see it, so.
I'm asking the question because who's regulating that you put that in?
Nobody requires it, the only reason we're offering it is to facilitate the face-to-face requirement within the licensing section.
That's what I'm saying, if council or the local authority didn't dictate they had to be there, or was that dictated they had to be there, the cameras, just wondering who is overseeing that, that's all.
We would still do it because we, we wanted to see the person matches the ID. We would still do it, because we still want to see them.
Okay.
Only because I sat on the Cannabis Advisory Board, during the application when they submitted everything, part of their application process was that they would have a drive-through, and they explained to us on the board that it would be a video monitoring system on there. As far as the specifications of that monitoring, there was nothing that was given, it was, okay, they have offered that they're going to have this, and it, by the board, we felt that it was, that was acceptable at the time.
Okay.
So, and then when we made the recommendation to council, it was that it's going to be a drive-through and then that they would have the monitoring.
You know, that's up to this board, I think, to make an interpretation, with all due respect. I understand the CAB, I'll call it, can endorse, but the nitty-gritty, the site plan and the things we're talking about rest with this board. And I'm sorry you didn't get to go to site plan review because we probably would have truncated this, this hearing tonight, and you would have been, you would have come in and we've all, maybe not from your perspective, because you would have had to go to two meetings, but from our perspective, it probably would have been a little shorter meeting, okay? But are you saying face-to-face, am I face-to-face with my wife who might be watching at home today? Do you consider me face-to-face with her, or with anyone that's watching? You can look at the screen, are you face-to-face with the hundreds, maybe thousands of people that are watching?
No, but if it's two-way, you are.
But you said it's one-way.
Okay, we said we could have a screen, we will do it two-way.
We got a little, we got a little progress. So I think face-to-face speaks for itself, I don't think there's any interpretation from me. So let me ask this, can this board grant an approval that violates other sections of the code?
Yes, because those other sections of the code are not your jurisdiction.
We can violate our own code.
You're not violating the code, all, you're?
If, if it is, if face-to-face is person-to-person, live, okay, I know, I know you disagree, can we approve that in violation?
You're not violating?
Of other parts of your?
Wait, I can think of an answer, so what, how it works is, will be, if the interpretation's correct, that that's in the purview of the Township Council, we'll play it out two different ways. They'll have to appear before the Township Council and make the same pitch for having the face-to-face and the camera two-way, however it's going to be. And let's say Township Council approves that, then that there's a finding that they met face-to-face. Let's say they don't approve it and they still want to use the drive-through lanes, don't let me speak, Cheryl, and if you think I'm incorrect, you would have to get a use variance then, because you wouldn't, it would be, they're saying that that the drive-through lanes wouldn't meet face-to-face, so if you still want to do face-to-face, then you'd need some type of variance, correct?
Well, we can do it.
No, it's?
No, you can't, it's not use variances.
This board, first of all, can't, doesn't have any jurisdiction over interpretation or use variance, it's a zoning board function, not a planning board function. And to answer your question, I haven't really thought about it, Nick, because, because of the really, the conversations that have been had with the Cannabis Advisory Board and the resolution of support from council, we're moving forward with the intention to utilize screens, and I think, I, I just asked Mr. Cook to, to confirm, he said one-way, it, it will be two-way?
Correct.
Right, two, two-way video? And to Mr. Torick's point, the video, the video screens will be set up in the drive-through so as to not interfere with drive-through traffic, and we can look at that further. And council may ask us, if we show that to them at the time of business licensing, may ask us to have the township engineer take a look and make sure he's satisfied that the addition of the screens doesn't interfere and doesn't alter the site plan approval if there is a minor site plan approval. But to answer your question, if council does not agree that two-way screens constitutes face-to-face, then the drive-throughs can't be used.
Yeah, I would say that's going to be the option, right, the, the drive-through can't be used or the?
You don't have jurisdiction to determine that, that is not within, that's not in the zoning code. The planning board, by the municipal land use law, has, is only permitted to look at the code and look at the application and compare them and make sure that the application satisfies the requirements of the zoning code, and if they don't, to grant variances, if variance really is met.
The zoning ordinance is 205, right Fred?
205.114.
205.1, okay, and 205.113?
That doesn't apply here.
That doesn't apply?
114 applies, because of the zoning district, it's the BD zone.
Okay.
Yeah.
205.113 is for the highway commercial and those types of districts.
Although the requirements are pretty much identical.
205.1, yes, they are, so I'm not sure why there's a distinction.
Me either.
205.14 is the exact items, but they're for the BD and the BD ones. Well, it is different because 205.113. And that would not apply in this, this case, because we're in the BD zone. Okay, one second, so does 205.114 say that all the requirements, so I'll meet all the requirements in relation to?
By the Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
Okay. So just so you understand, this is new to us, so we're going through and you're citing things that we may not know, I'm asking for clarity, and I'm going to, when I get to my letter, I can do it now, go through some additional clarity where you indicate an ordinance 2024-07, hard to say it, sorry. We don't have authority to look at those licensing regulations. However, I think in looking at our ordinance, and I'll just run through them, I know you ran through a number of the items with Mr. Cook. In our ordinance, 205-114, it talks in A, the CRC, I don't think anyone here knows what the regulations of the CRC, so we just need testimony that says you're complying.
What's, and he gave that testimony?
Right, right, and you went through all those items, and they're essentially the items that were the regulations in our, in our code or our ordinance that was adopted, 2024-07. The second one, which is B, so 114B says an endorsement of the Cannabis Advisory Board, and you're saying you provided that resolution that was the endorsement to us, correct?
I provided the resolution of support from the governing body which references the, a letter from the Cannabis Advisory Board with the endorsement. I don't have a copy of that letter, and it wasn't identified by D.
Right, and was that letter, did that letter identify those 20 items that were required? So I don't want to make sure we're not, I have to advise the board that we're following, this says there's an endorsement required, so was that submitted as part of this application with the letter that's referenced in the resolution?
No, because it's referenced in the resolution of support as being provided.
So we're a little in the dark on that, that's why this is being raised, whether it's, whatever your position is on that. C was really the separations, we had no issues, my goodness, your engineer went through great detail on that.
We, and our planner's going to address the, the separation requirements.
Right, D was adequate security, so this is the one that I think falls under the township's regulations in here, which talk about three, which is security, talks about 24-hour onsite video monitoring. How do you provide that security when the next section, which is four, talks about emergency power? That's where the engineer would look at, a site plan, you need an emergency generator, how are you doing that? You have to provide under four, electronic security at all times, 24/7. So if there is an emergency generator, as the engineer, I would say, where is it, how is it protected, how is it supplied, how are you getting the fuel to it, et cetera?
What section are you citing? Are you a 204 still?
I'm looking at 2000, I'm looking at our ordinance, which is 2000, 205-114D, and it references adequate onsite security shall be demonstrated.
Right.
So with that, I'm saying that crosses over to these regulations, which, how are you demonstrating the onsite security when it requires 24/7 monitoring?
Which we've already testified to.
What happens when the power goes out? It requires, item four says emergency power must be provided, and item 18 further goes on to speak of outside generators. So if you're going to have a generator, it's not going to be inside the building, unless you're doing some kind of a solar, and then I would ask you what the life of that is, because you need to provide adequate onsite security. So I'm looking at the emergency power, 24/7 requirement, the electronic security systems, and then they actually ask for where the outdoor generators would be.
So those, those items that you're citing were codified in the licensing chapter, all of them were codified in Chapter 114.
So is there an emergency generator, I guess I'm asking?
So I'll bring Mr. Atkins back to talk about that, and certainly one could be provided, but the generator question, this is where your ordinance, the codification of Ordinance 2024-07 gets confusing for everybody. Well, maybe not for me, I don't think, I think it's pretty black and white. Some of it was codified in licensing, some of it was codified in zoning. Those items that you just went through, the emergency power, and there's another one you cite in your code, site manage, site management, and then outside generators and mechanical, other mechanical, mechanical equipment are all in 114 in the licensing. None of them are in 205.114. 114 specifically says, I'm sorry, but let me finish, 114 specifically says adequate onsite security shall be demonstrated, comma, including waste materials.
Including, right.
Yeah, including waste materials, well?
So adequate onsite security is that 24/7 that it speaks to?
Which has been demonstrated, but your point is what happens when the power goes out?
Yeah, it becomes a site plan issue.
There was testimony, well, the placement of a generator would be a site plan issue.
That's correct.
Enforcement of the requirement for 24/7 monitoring is a licensing issue.
Right, and you can't have 24/7 monitoring without backup power.
So how does?
No matter how you do it, I just need to ask the question, how are you doing it?
Okay, so how, how in your other, in the other cannabis retail stores that you've worked on, how do you provide for backup power in the event power goes out? What happens with the security at that point in time?
I don't know what they're called, but there's a box that we use that basically? I don't know what they're called, but there's a box that we use that basically gives us a few, it's not, I don't know the technical name for it. It's like a few hours of battery life, but it's inside. It's like, it looks like a computer thing.
Okay, but we're talking a minimum of 48 hours it requires? Correct. In, in 2024-07?
I, I don't know how long they last, I just don't know. But it's a battery, it's like a battery pack that basically provides.
I, I understand, I understand battery packs. But your position was that we can't provide, this is not in our jurisdiction, but it is, it is one of the items that is covered in 205, 114, which is adequate onsite security, so.
Yeah, I'm not entirely.
You may say that that's not required and fine.
Listen, we have space onsite for a generator, so, and there is actually on the survey, Brian, would you come back up, do you have the survey plotted by any chance?
You know, I don't have the survey.
But we can use this, the site plan?
I can't see it on E2. There are a couple options on it. Space for the, space for a machine generator needed. There is an existing mechanical room, block in the back. It's an exterior room with a metal lock door on it in the back corner here, it's actually what it appears to be. Block in the back corner. There's something, there's something, I believe one of the air conditioners is already back there. Depending on the size of the generator, it could go there depending on the space more, if the exterior space, open door. If not, there's also plenty of space behind the building here, which we could act with, protect the wall or block and cover, whatever we need to provide. That would also be exterior enclosed, be standard in the rear, to run a generator.
Okay.
And that would be just like a generac, generator that you could put in every, every home? Correct, okay. Very some generator.
Yeah.
Can I, can I?
Well, yeah, before you say that, if you're looking at A2 in that back corner, or the, the northwest corner of the building, there's, where Brian was just indicating, there's an AC unit that's enclosed in there. The survey also picked up something and marked it as G, but wasn't really clear about it. Mr. Cook is the property owner, he purchased it, but have you ever been in that enclosure?
No.
I peeked and I didn't really see.
No, no, the reason, the only reason I was in that thing is because the air conditioner got stolen. So the only reason I was in there one time was to see the air conditioning unit in another box. I don't know what the box is, I'm not a, I'm just not very good mechanically, so I don't know what that is. So there might be one there, it's a bank, so I would think that they would have a something, but I don't know what that is.
Right. So what we'll do is we'll verify that, can, what that is with Mr. Torick in, with an inspection. If it's an existing generator or backup supply, power supply that the bank used to use, we'll make sure it's in functioning, working, functioning order.
I would leave that to code, code enforcement with fumes and all those things.
If it doesn't exist there, then we'll show it during compliance, we'll show a pad, a place for a generator in the rear. And we'll enclose it and make sure it doesn't emit, you know how generators work, they're tested periodically. While they're testing, they're permitted to exceed state noise levels. While they're, and during emergencies, they're permitted to exceed, it's the only time that you really see them unless, you know, that's the only time they operate, pretty much, if you need them, or if it's being tested. So we'll, we'll provide that back there and enclose it with a, and most generators nowadays, they come in sound attenuating enclosures anyway, in their own box. Not the ones maybe you buy at Home Depot for your own house, but any, commercial grade ones, they come in their own sound attenuating metal type box.
Just a quick question for you, so with the generator, obviously that would have to be signed by electrical engineer. As it says here, it's going to provide control for backup for the product and odor control, but we don't really know how big that's going to be. Somebody would have to determine that, some guy's not going to go out there and pull this, pull the joke and start the generator, you want this thing to come on automatically. So that really should be detailed and shown in the drawing, that's what he's saying.
Yep, and we'll show that.
You know what I mean?
Yep, yeah, now we'll show that, we'll work that out during approval, compliance, post approval, hopefully compliance, and to his satisfaction, we won't be able to get the plan signed until he's satisfied.
You have one more, you have more?
I just, since Mr. Cook is up here, if I could. You had mentioned in testimony that not permitted to be used onsite. And you had mentioned by township code. I'm sorry, and you had mentioned it's by township code, which code is that? Is that the ordinance?
No, it's just not, you're, it's, you're not allowed any onsite consumption for CRC either.
Yeah, you had mentioned by code, I just was curious, because typically what I would do is just ask a simple question, do you have signage? I mean, that's a site plan related issue. I, I can't cross over into this according to.
No, we would put that up, I mean, that's.
But, but that's, that's one of the codes that were regulations that the municipality wanted. And obviously other, I've worked on many cannabis sites, and that's typical signage is put up at all the sites, reminding everybody, because it's easy for you to say and you to monitor, but you need to remind everybody out in the parking.
I agree, so.
Okay.
Yep, if you want signage for that, we'll, we'll put you to put that on the plan, sure. CRC prohibits onsite consumption absent a consumption lounge endorsement to the class five license and consumption lounges are only permitted where the municipality permits it. It's not permitted here, it's not proposed.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have two questions real quick. We went through a lot of security details, are there policies that will be provided to the security guards or all your employees? Do you have them already written up or?
We, we use them in different, yes.
Okay, and just on the site, I'm sorry, the floor plan, it says security next to the receptionist. So is the security guard sitting in there the entire time?
Yes, well, no, not sitting in there, but that's where the security office is. There will be some cameras in there, et cetera.
I just wanted to clarify that because if he was in there.
TVs to see the cameras.
If he or she was in there, she'd have to go through the receptionist's office to get out to the floor, seems like.
No, no, that's just.
So I just wanted to clarify that that's in security.
Actually, half of that room, there's so many safes in that building, ha, like, a third of that room is a big safe for the drop offs, so.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so while we're, that, that kind of takes us to where we were going next, the last part of the questioning or testimony that I have for you. Going to. All right, so going back to A4, which was marked, and it's the elevations and sign sheet that was provided with the application. So I, Brian's indicated through testimony, we're not doing anything to the building. When you, when, before you purchased the property, did you do a building, have the building inspected?
Yes.
Did you, did that inspection include, you know, structural integrity and the condition of the exterior facade and materials?
Yes.
Was all of that found to be in good and working condition?
Yes.
So for that reason, you're, are you planning any changes to the exterior of the building?
Just repainting, just touching up the paint on top.
So the blue banding that's shown on this exhibit around the top of the building and around the canopy, that's going to remain?
Yes.
Okay, so the only thing that you're really changing on the building, other than maybe sprucing up the paint on that, is the building mountain sign, correct?
Correct.
And what we're showing here, the colors and the logo, is that the colors, official colors and logo for friendly greens?
Yes.
And was that designed with that blue just to be able to merge it and make it compatible with the existing blue banding on the building? And then that design, is that carried over into the, reface, freeman, freestanding sign?
Yes.
All right, and then you, you heard Brian testify about the size. It's, it's the applicant's intent to comply with the ordinance's requirements with regard to the sign size and placement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Okay. No other witnesses, or?
I have two witnesses.
May, Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Cook a question?
Certainly.
A site lighting, I have a question for you, you own the property and obviously you've seen outside. At, on your site lighting plan, there's, there's some deficiencies and it, it does not identify the lights along the rear of the building. Were they recently installed or were they on the building when you purchased it?
I have not replaced any lights, so they're there.
The lighting plant does not show the lighting, and the reason I bring it up is almost comical. Along the rear of the building, they have exterior wire dripping like Christmas lights or swags. And it has floodlights shining out, and I just didn't know, they look relatively new and I didn't know how that happened or why that happened, but.
No, I think they put them afterwards because, just to shine more light on it for security. But I didn't, that was before I purchased it.
Oh, okay, so they were there, okay.
Good?
Yes.
Next two witnesses are going to be hopefully more brief, thank you Rusty. We're going to call Nathan Mosley, who's our traffic engineer. Listen, we appreciate your indulgence, we understood coming in that you haven't seen a cannabis retail application yet, so we really kind of wanted to get into some more detail with you and explain more of the cannabis process.
You've seen them just out here.
Yeah, right, and I just, you know, I, even having, if we had gone to the advisory board meeting, that wouldn't have really educated the board on cannabis.
It actually would have been a good move to do that.
So, well, we were not asked to attend.
You have a drawing here that Fred hasn't even seen.
It, he, it's the same drawing he's seen, it's just that the two way arrow is moving. That's, he just wasn't aware that we were going to, you know, so it's, the drawing's not new. But the point is that review advisory board is permissible, it's not mandatory under your ordinance. We didn't even know it, because it says it, it may, may be directed there, and it's a purely advisory function, we didn't even know it existed and we weren't asked to go.
I know, it's for your, it's for the applicant's benefit as much as the town.
Yeah, I mean, there's not even a spot on the application form that would have indicated that we've been there. You might want to think about updating your application form to have like a checklist for that. In other, a lot of towns, I'm required to do that, but we weren't, or we would have availed ourselves of that if we'd been, if we'd been asked. All right, that's not for you. All right, would you please swear, Mr. Mosley?
Yes, please raise your hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give it will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth? I do. All right, please state your name and address for the record. Yeah, just for the record again, my name is Nathan Mosley. Address is 277 White Horse Pike, Atco, New Jersey. I'm the managing partner for Shropshire Associates, we're a traffic engineering firm. We've been in South Jersey now for over 20 years, I've been with the company over 20 years myself, doing traffic engineering work throughout the state. I'm a licensed professional engineer, as well as a member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the American Society of Civil Engineers. And I've been before this board several occasions over the past few years, and I've been before hundreds of other planning zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. And I've probably been involved in, I would say probably 20 to 25 cannabis dispensary applications throughout the state as well.
I submit Mr. Mosley is an expert in the field of traffic engineering.
Good, okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Mosley, you've been present tonight, you've heard all the testimony that's come before you?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the project site?
Yes.
So you prepared a traffic and parking analysis in May, correct?
Correct.
Did you prepare that report utilizing methods that are generally accepted in the field of traffic engineering?
Yes, we did.
Would you please describe to the board the investigation that you undertook in anticipation of preparing that analysis and provide the board the benefits of your conclusions?
Sure, not a problem. So the first thing we really did was look at the existing conditions. You've heard some testimony already, we have the exhibit that showed, showed the existing bank facility, but just the traffic aspects related to it. Specifically, the site itself, it has a bank with a drive through in, on it today. It was fully approved before for this, for this property and this site and this intensity and, excuse me. Sorry. That was annoying. Anyway, sorry, so again, this site has been approved for a bank with drive through. It's about 3,300 square feet. The applicant is not proposing any real modifications to the building itself, and I'll talk about that a little bit more as I go through the analysis letter. But again, the existing site's located along Lenola Road. In this area, it's under the jurisdiction of Burlington County. The driveway that's existing today does permit left turns in and right turns in both from Lenola Road. And as stated before, it's a right turn out only driveway. There is an existing left turn lane on Lenola Road for vehicles that are entering, so they do have an area when they're making a left in to queue and stack if they need to, wait for a gap in traffic. So that does enhance safety for vehicles as they're entering the site from Lenola Road. And then on the outbound side, in order to enforce the right turn only, the driveway itself has what we call a half pork chop. So there's a channelized island in the center that physically will push vehicles to the right. There's also signage to enforce the no left turns coming out. And again, this was all approved by the county before for the bank site itself. The development, again, is for about 3,300 square feet of retail cannabis. I think one thing to note about this from a traffic perspective, which regards, with regards to the trip gen, is that what I've seen with a lot of these applications throughout the state is that they are, you know, utilizing existing buildings. So it's not like where you have maybe a Wawa or Dunkin' Donuts, and they have their prototypes and they come in, they clear cut the site and they, they build their prototype to a specific size that they want to do. A lot of times what happens with these cannabis uses is they come in, they utilize existing buildings. So the size can vary from site to site. They can be as small as like 1,000 square feet, in this case, we have about 3,300 square feet. And I think a lot of that is really more related to the buildings that are available, the areas that are available within each town for these uses. And so I, the correlation to traffic is that when we do trip generation analysis, which I'll talk about here in a second, the trip generation analysis is based upon studies that have been done at other existing sites and then correlated to the square footage of that building that's being proposed or being, being proposed to be utilized. In this, in this case, as well as a lot of other cases, these, these uses really are just utilizing the square footage that's available to them. I'm sure they would tell you that if they had less square footage, they could still make it work just fine. But again, from, so from a traffic perspective, you know, we, we see that the average study sites are a little bit smaller than this. But again, I just want to put that on the record, and that's what I've seen from a, from a traffic perspective with these uses, is that, you know, a lot, sometimes you might have a larger building being used, which might correlate to larger trip generation numbers based on ITE. But the experience that I've seen is that, you know, typically they, they, they just utilize the space they have from a pre-existing building or, or use that was there before. But anyway, so again, the existing site is on Lenola Road, it's a bank facility under the jurisdiction of Camden, of Camden County, sorry, Burlington County. So as far as the trip generation is concerned, the trip generation analysis is based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. They've done studies at existing cannabis, retail cannabis facilities within the country. They've taken that data, they've compiled it into the latest trip generation manual, and then they publish that data, and it provides us with, with rates based upon the size of the building to estimate the traffic for the site. So based upon those rates and based upon the size of the building, it's estimated that during the peak hour, so during the busiest hour, specifically in the afternoon and on a Saturday, which is typically when, when these uses are at their busiest, it's anticipated based on its square footage that the site would generate around one to two trips per minute during that peak hour. I do believe that's probably a little conservative, given the size of this building. But again, that's what the ITE trip generation rates state for the size of this, for the size of this facility and this proposed use. Just as a comparison for you, the previously approved bank site, I ran the trip generation analysis for that. So if this site was empty, if it was coming in for approval for a bank with the drive through lanes as it stands today, it would actually generate similar trip generation numbers during those peak hours compared to the proposed dispensary use. So again, this approved bank would have similar, actually slightly higher numbers during the PM peak hour than the proposed cannabis use itself. So I think really, it would be my opinion and my expectation is that most likely you'll see traffic similar to what's, to what was there for the previous bank facility as far as intensity and activity levels. And again, the site's been approved, it's been designed for that type of traffic. And so I think, you know, in this case, it's really ideally suited to the proposed use that's being proposed here tonight from a traffic perspective. Beyond that, as far as the tri, the traffic is concerned, the other main thing that we looked at was the parking analysis and the parking supply. So you've heard testimony, we have a total of 25 parking spaces on the site. And again, that's, that's a fairly substantial amount. The two things that we did to look at the potential parking needs for this use are, one, we went again to the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. Again, they, they've done parking studies at existing facilities as well. The parking studies they did were, were again, throughout the country, and they showed that the average peak parking demand at these sites, so basically the average parking rate when they were at their busiest time, whether it was a Friday or a Saturday, was about five and a half vehicles per 1,000 square feet. So for about 3,300 square feet, the anticipation is that the peak parking demand would be around 19 vehicles. Now that includes the vehicles for employees as well as customers of the site. And again, we have 25 spaces on the site, so it's my opinion, we do have more than enough parking to accommodate the anticipated parking needs for the use without having any potential spill over onto other properties or, or other areas. But in addition to looking at ITE, we also did a parking analysis or a parking study at an existing cannabis use in Mount Laurel. Site's located along Route 73, it's on the, the southbound side of Route 73. We went out and we did counts, parking survey counts at that existing facility in December of 2024. Those counts were done on a Friday and a Saturday, which in my experience is typically the busiest times for these uses, normally Friday afternoon, early evening time, and in the same time on a Saturday. And what we found at that location was that their maximum parking demand, and their building was slightly smaller, was nine vehicles. So at any time, the highest noted parking count at that location was nine vehicles. That happened on both Friday and Saturday. So if you look at that building size, that equates to about 2.8 vehicles per 1,000 square feet, which would correlate to approximately 10 vehicles for this size. which would correlate to approximately 10 vehicles for this size and this size of building. So again, even with that other existing data point from Mount Laurel, I do believe, again, there's more than enough parking for this proposed development with the 25 spaces that are being proposed. The last thing I'll just say briefly is with regards to onsite circulation. Again, you heard the testimony, we're proposing two-way circulation from the entrance location all the way to the end of the perpendicular parking spaces along the building, and then one-way circulation around the rear of the bank, or, sorry, the bank, the cannabis building, and then back out to the exit. Again, exactly the same as the previously approved bank. So, again, I do believe that circulation can safely accommodate the needs for this use and provide for safe and efficient circulation on-site. And again, I do believe the access, as it's designed, can provide for safe and efficient access for the change in use to the proposed cannabis. Again, I don't anticipate really any intensity changes to the traffic during peak hour conditions with the proposed dispensary yet.
The, when you come in, or when you're leaving, the two-way park, people coming in, is there going to be a stop sign on that island? You see where folks coming in off Lenola Road? And there may be somebody leaving?
So, if you're coming in?
Coming in, I'm looking at this one because this is what I understand up here.
Yeah, so this is, this is Exhibit A2, this is the color I've written in the site plan. So, if you're coming in off of Lenola, whether you're making a right or a left, you'll have free-
Well, you can't, you can't make a left, right?
You can make a left in, there isn't-
Oh, yes, okay, you're right, you can make a left in, just, yes.
So, if you're making a left or a right in, you'll have free-flow movement into the site. The only internal stop will be for anyone who comes around the building, they'll have to stop here and ensure that nobody's coming out from the parking spaces before they make a right and go out of the car.
Yeah, so my concern is people coming in and someone is the, when you come in off of Lenola Road, is that one-way or two-way? I forget what you said.
It's two-way through here.
Okay, it's two-way?
Yes.
All right, so someone leaving, right there, yes?
Yeah.
Someone coming in at the same time as someone leaving, what you've just pointed. You see any issues there?
No.
Would you need a stop sign? Is there enough space that they can?
No, there's sufficient width through here for two-way travel. I think it's 25 feet through this area as well. So, there's more than enough space if someone's exiting that there's room for someone else.
Okay, I can't, okay.
It's hard with the aerial because that tree canopy kind of covers a lot of that entrance to the driveway. You know, when you look at, I can see when you look at the aerial, it almost looks like that entrance is really kind of tight. But it's a lot, I drove that site tonight on the way here, and it's, there's plenty of room there. It's just the tree canopy and the aerial kind of makes it look a little smaller than it really is.
Anybody from the board have any comments? Correct?
No, Chairman.
Thanks, Nate. I agree, there are no issues with regard to parking. Actually, two extra spaces because you did the EV make-ready spaces.
True.
Here's 27 spaces.
True.
The pork chop aisle, you said the signs are there? There's no signs there.
Okay, I apologize.
I don't know if that was on Brian's plan to be installed.
We can ensure that those are provided.
A piece of PVC and a little stub of metal sticking out.
I saw a big metal, like, signpost out there with no sign on it tonight, so I think the sign-
I just want to make sure we have the proper-
We'll ensure those are provided.
We'll show it on the plans and reinstall.
The site distance, if you could speak to that minimally, I think. Brian shows brush to be removed. It's a tough, it's a tough right turn out of there because there's a curve in the road and it's sort of coming downhill. I would ask, and maybe this is for Brian, but instead of trimming the brush to the site triangle, that the brush be trimmed back like 10 more feet, or else I would say they'd have to be out there cutting it weekly. It's pretty tough. If you were there tonight, Cheryl, you would see pulling out of there, making a right is not the easiest thing.
You're talking about when you look left when you're trying to pull out? Yes.
Brian hasn't shown to be cleared, so that's perfect. But we know in a month it's going to grow a foot.
Sure.
So, I'm asking if you could cut that back so we never have a site distance problem.
Sure, we'll definitely, we'll show that on the plan and work that out with you, for sure.
Two more things, really. Q, the fourth space, and I'm going to talk a few minutes on this if you don't mind, Nate.
Yeah.
The plans that were submitted for review show a 20-foot bypass on the site plan, and then it turns into a 23-foot drive aisle, which led me to believe that the fourth Q or the fourth drive-through space, drive-through aisle, was being eliminated because that's what it identifies. So then I went out there and I actually realized I went to the circulation plan. Circulation plan shows a fire engine of a certain length, width, you know, wheelbase. And it has a creeping rate between that area. The widest that is is 10 feet, it goes lesser than 10 feet. I'm glad that Brian made that two-way driveways on tonight's plan because my concern was that 10-foot wide or less area was now no longer a bypass. It was actually a driveway. I drove through in my Tahoe and I felt uncomfortable. So, I'm just saying, the circulation plan shows the drive aisle, that fourth one being maintained. So, there's a discrepancy between the site plan saying there was a 20-foot wide bypass, which led me to believe one thing, and a 23-foot aisle. Site circulation plan shows a fire truck circulating through a 10-foot or less wide area. When you look at the circulation plan, and I'm not sure if you have, the Q for the fourth aisle, you can only have one car inside under the canopy, or else the rest of the back of the car gets taken off by the emergency services vehicle. So, I was, in having conversations with Brian, he did tell me that they're maintaining that. But in reviewing the plan on its, on its own faith, I'm confused what's going on because there's, it looks like there are some issues. And I think that's something maybe you can speak to as far as, or Brian, I'm not sure, with regard to what the original intent was. Seems like the original intent was to allow for a bypass 20 feet wide, to allow for aisle circulation. But I think eliminating the two-way or providing two-way traffic again still may pose some issues that have to be addressed. So, one would be the Q area, the Q length for the fourth stall. And I don't know if you have history or anything from the IT regarding queuing for a cannabis drive-through. I'm doubting that's out there? Or any experience of anything in the area, or I know you've done this all over the state, where the Q is X? I didn't ask about Q because it looked like there was sufficient space until I saw that fourth drive aisle, when I now see that the drive, the fire truck or emergency vehicles have to go through that area. So, if you could just speak to that a little bit. Even if the aisle is there, maybe it could be like at a bank teller. The red light's on on the fourth stall. I can't imagine a run on the facility with four drive-throughs taking place, but I don't want to, you know, I hope your business is better than that. But something's got to be done with the fourth stall, and I'm concerned about the narrowness of the drive-through. And I know comments have been made throughout the last couple of days, and you made it tonight. This was previously approved, I'm not sure what year, 80 something, 90 something. Just because something was previously approved doesn't make it right, safe, or appropriate. So, if you could just fill me in a little bit on the Q first, maybe on-
Yeah, so as far as the Q is concerned, we haven't seen as many facilities with drive-through lanes. That's not the typical design, that's not necessarily always available. My anticipation from, you know, the testimony that's been provided and talking to operators is that, you know, what happens is you order ahead of time, and you get basically kind of a designated pickup time, and you just come. You show identification, provide all the credits that you are the person, you're there.
And this may have been something for Mr. Coop.
Right.
How long is that operation? Is that 30 seconds? Is it two minutes?
I don't know the total time, but I think it's rather expedited. Yeah, it's a pretty quick process, assuming every, all the, everything's in hand. And again, it's controlled, to my understanding, by most operators with, you know, almost like a fixed time or a window you arrive to pick up products. So, again, you know, I don't know how they're going to control or how they're going to utilize all the available lanes. I understand your concern about if there's multiple lanes. I don't anticipate there to be really a substantial Q. Even if there's only one lane being utilized, I don't anticipate there to be more than one or two vehicles in that queue at any time.
My concern, people may pick the outside lane. I do it at a bank because I don't want to try and squeeze them in too much.
And we can discuss that operationally, how that can be handled, whether they can, you know, I'm sure they can control what lanes are open or being used by customers for pickup.
I just spoke with Mr. Koop, and what we would do is agree as a condition of approval that that fourth lane will just always be red light and never used.
The red light.
All right. I don't know that there's a light on there, but we'll make sure there's a red light.
There isn't a light, but we could obviously install a light.
Right, we'll make it work. The problem with the canopy is that this, the two columns that support the canopy are all the way on the outside part of the canopy. There's no middle support. So, in order to eliminate that fourth lane, you'd have to do some significant work out there. And it's, it's just, the better option for the applicant is just leave it, but we'll cut it off so we don't use it.
Better option cost-wise, right?
Well, time and, time expense and practicality. I mean, my legal argument is it's an existing non-conforming condition. It's permitted to continue because we're not changing the intensity of the use or the way that the drive-through was designed to be utilized. But I don't want to get into that, I don't want to have that argument. I think the compromise is that fourth lane will just always be shut down because there are three other lanes. So, you don't have to worry about queuing coming out of there.
So, that deals with the queuing issue.
Correct.
The narrowness of that aisle. Brian has shown on a site circulation, which in theory, these things look nice in theory until you get someone that has human, human nature and human brain that we see them driving next to us every day.
Sure, so Brian's going to address your questions about that, and then we can talk about that.
Correct. To clarify, right, there were dimensions here that you mentioned was mainly because part of the tent ahead of time was that like that last lane would not be used with the red light at pretty much every time. So, hence the message you mentioned, the 20 foot, 23 feet, primarily grasping the layout of striping. They're not necessarily, I don't, I definitely understand what you're working with, indicating that as a whole 20-foot bypass. It's primarily because you, we-
That is what it says, right. That is what it says.
That this island striping and the mouth of that is 20 feet, that that stripe is 23 feet off the existing curb line. And then obviously, you do get to a point in between there where the columns, a red island under the canopy and a clear 10-foot space on the outside of the canopy exists, and then you would have to go around, you have to go around that, which is why-
Again, in an ideal situation, the canopy supports get moved into the third, and now we comply with everything. There's no concerns, no safety issues.
So, that's why we looked at, when we looked at the site circulation, we didn't even consider the fire truck trying to actually get under the canopy because it's, that's a 9.6 canopy, that's why we directed the fire truck to the outside of it. And then the plan did actually show, the plan does actually have some curb line improvements because the, as you mentioned, it is a computer-generated analysis of the, and I think if you're lucky, suggests that, you know, one of the options would be to discuss the fire marshal and run the truck through there, which is, which is very acceptable to, if that's what the fire marshal would like to, like, to do, or like, look at it. But one of the things we, the one, the main thing we did find with that is that without improvements beyond the canopy, as you made the turn, you would potentially clip under where the overhang was, which is not adequate for a fire truck. It's not, the fire trucks are much taller than 9.6. So, that's why we did have improvements beyond the canopy to just extend that curb out, give it a little bit more turning there when we looked at it.
Again, you understand what I saw on the site plan, which we're all looking at now, is there were only three lanes with a bypass. That's what's shown on that site plan now. And then there was some note about a 16-foot height. I'm still confused with that.
16-foot height to the top.
The top?
Yeah, it's the survey, yeah, just like the surveyor notes the building. The building and the canopy are the same elevation across the pipe, which is about 16 feet. The surveyor had identified what the roof heights were for the whole structure.
So, with that, I would just say, every approval is subject to the fire official. I tried to call Mr. Currie, let me see, I found that he was on vacation, to go through that with him.
He's back tomorrow, and he's very well aware of this, yes. So, I did, I did reach out to him, and he is well aware, and he's expecting to give them a call.
Okay.
Great.
But I think demonstrating this may be the best way because computer-aided, we know what that is, right?
Right, it does its best to model that, but to simulate it, but, yeah.
But I just want the board to know that I'm aware, aware of this and we're concerned. I went out and measured it, and it's 10 at the widest, and it does get narrower, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Nate.
Sure.
That's all I have for Mr. Mosley. If there's no other questions for Mr. Mosley, then our final witness is our professional planner. Thank you, Nathan.
Yep.
Mr. Hawk, if you would please state your name and be sworn?
Sure. Stephen Hawk.
Do you swear from the testimony you provide tonight, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Mr. Hawk, you're a licensed professional planner in the city of New Jersey, correct?
I am.
Would you please provide the board the benefit of your education and experience in the field?
Okay, I've been practicing planning since 1988. Before that, I got a bachelor's science degree from Stockton University. I've spent 28 years in the city of Island as a professional planner doing development review. Since my time at the city of Island, I've spent about nine years doing private practice, been sworn before 50 boards as an expert, and also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and have been so for over 30 years.
Mr. Hawk is an expert in the field of professional planning.
Okay, tough with that.
Thank you. Mr. Hawk, you've been present, and I joined the entire presentation that was provided before you, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're the professional planner for the project, so are you familiar with the site, its surrounding area and location?
Definitely, yes.
And you're familiar with the existing site conditions and what's being proposed by the applicant by way of cannabis retail, correct?
I am.
All right, so the code, Chapter 205, Section 114 of the Township Zoning Code provides conditional use standards that allows retail cannabis is conditionally permitted use in the BD zoning district. We're going to walk through each of those conditional use standards, and I'm going to ask you to opine or demonstrate to the board how each of those standards have been met, either by testimony already provided or through affirmative testimony from you. So, the first requirement is Section A. Facility shall meet all the requirements for licensure by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. Mr. Koopda provided testimony regarding his experience in the field with licensing, his experience with CRC, the proposal at the site, and opined in a layperson but experienced opinion that he believes it meets that criteria. Can you touch on, touch on that or verify any further?
Well, that would be a condition of approval, and it was mentioned by Mr. Koopda that it is met and that the proper submission was made.
Correct. So, based upon, and just for the board's benefit, we've done this before as a, as a pair for similar applications in the past, correct? And so, you've been present when Mr. Koopda's provided similar testimony to other boards, correct?
I have, yes.
And to your recollection, has, is his testimony usually, has his testimony that you've heard been consistent from meeting to meeting?
It has.
So, would you consider him experienced enough in the field to be able to make the, render the opinion that he provided?
Yes, definitely.
And would you support his opinion based upon that, that, that the site will meet all of the regulatory requirements for licensure by the CRC?
I will, I do.
And of course, we would agree to provide a copy of the ultimate license issued by CRC as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Section B, an endorsement from the Cannabis Advisory Board must be obtained prior to the application to the planning board. You've heard testimony already regarding Township Resolution 2024 R-101, adopted in May of 2024, where the municipality provided its support for friendly greens to operate cannabis retail at this site, correct?
Yes, and based on that, that is met as well.
You've read, have you read that resolution? Okay, and you know that it makes mention in there that the cab had actually reviewed this and made a recommendation for support to the governing body? Okay, and then it's a, that resolution was provided with the application, correct?
It was.
And then it's a condition of approval, we'll ask Ms., we'll work with Ms. Danson to track down whatever letter the cab issued and supply that as well. The next, Section C, it creates separation distances measured from the respective land use types, and there's four different types, to those land, from the front door of the cannabis establishment to those land use types. So, there are 250-foot, foot minimum separation distances required to various uses. You're familiar with that section?
I definitely am.
Okay, and you've prepared some exhibits to demonstrate compliance with that, correct?
I did.
So, I'm just going to turn this over to you at this point to walk through that.
Okay. Yeah, the first two items that we covered under the conditional use section was more of an administrative compliance. But this is where we get to, into the proximity. You see from the graphic, the very first one that I have is the 200-foot proximity. It's an orange circle centered by the front door of the facility, and you could see where that 250-foot circle extends. It extends east, past and through Linola Road into Moorestown, and then the majority of that circle is within Maple Shade to the west, north, and to the south. And you could also see that it implicates just a few buildings nearby, both to the north and the south. And the very first item is 250 feet from any behavioral health care facility or residential medical detox center. I did not find any within the 250 feet. I did not find any actually within Maple Shade. There were what appeared to be some, but they were in an adjacent municipality in Moorestown, but they are definitely well in excess of the 250 feet that's required by your ordinance. Number two, 250 feet from a residential district or use or any place of worship.
Oh, I'm sorry. We never marked that, so.
I was just going to tell you this, Tom, but I can't mark it to A6.
A6.
A6 for the 250.
For the 250, right.
So the next one is your zone map, and it shows a 1,900-foot distance from the site to the PD zone, the planned development zone, which does allow residential use, and that obviously exceeds 250 feet.
So that, that has a name at the top, says distance to residential district, correct? So A7?
And it also covers residential use as well, because that's where I found to be the closest residential use. There was another one that was outside of the PD zone in the BD zone, another residential use, but it's also in excess of 1,900 feet. Also within number two is any place of worship. I calculated it being 8,900 feet to the, kind of towards the center of Maple Shade over by what is, I identified the closest church is Our Lady of Perpetual Health.
And that is distance to house of worship, A8?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is a school, and the school that I identified is the Maud Wilkins Elementary School, as being 8,700 feet approximately from the site.
A9.
And then also within that same provision, childcare center, the over the rainbow early learning childcare center, over 4,000 square feet, or feet, 4,400 feet from the site, well in excess of the 250 required.
And that's A10.
And then of the items in the last one, number four, public parks or other public building, I identified the, the public property and park that has the water tower, the baseball field, and the skate park as being 4,980 feet away.
And that's A11.
Correct. So that covers the distance and proximity requirements. And then we move on to D. There was a lot of testimony given and back and forth on adequate onsite security, and that will be met to meet the requirements of the municipality, and also proper disposal of waste materials.
So that was part D, then part E?
Adequate odor control, that will be taken care of by the operation of the site, and that will be met. And then also, the hours of operation under F would be adhered to as well.
And then finally, G talks about the ability to impose a requirement for noise wall barrier when appropriate.
In its discretion.
In its discretion, and we've talked a little bit about noise. The only noise, potential noise issue that we might be creating is with the installation of a generator, but we're going to make sure that that is adequately contained within its own shell and/or within an enclosure that provides for noise attenuation. So where I'm looking for it.
So based on meeting all of the conditional use standards, we're not before the zoning board, we're before the planning board, because it's a conforming use, it's a use that's permitted by ordinance, and when you meet all the conditions, you're a conditional use approval before the planning board. So I feel that that's, that's met.
Okay. Then I'll defer a little bit to back and forth with Mr. Tor, just to confirm I'm reading the report correctly. There's a, the host of items that he's identified as variances, I'm not sure if they're all variances, or some of them might probably be donated, denoted as waivers, but just to go through the list, the bulk variance that we had all identified and agreed upon initially was the minimum lot width based upon the testimony and the analysis from Mr. Tor earlier. It sounds like that is no longer a required variance. If that was a variance, could that, that would be an existing nonconforming condition that would be proposed to remain in a variant, technically if it was still a deviation, variance would not be needed. You could still grant one, but it's permitted to continue as an existing nonconforming condition. Are you satisfied that that's not, no, that is no longer required?
I am, but I would leave it up to the council or the chairman. If you want to go through the process, that's fine, and just get a few, few comments. But I don't believe it is required, no.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Mr. Hawk to opine on all of them at once, so we'll just kind of quickly identify them, make sure I have them right. So there was a, there was one identified as a waiver request that was from providing sidewalks. The other items were the minimum 15-foot width for one-way drive aisles. We're eliminating that because we're eliminating the one-way drive aisle that was being created.
Well, I believe that's still required. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a drive aisle. It's called a bypass, but it's a drive aisle.
Okay.
What number, what number?
In his report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote down the sections. Yeah, I wrote down the sections of the code, because I've had to kind of farce through here.
Just so I can follow along.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You don't know either?
That's number 12. That was number 12.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. The sidewalk waiver is number four.
Wow.
All right.
We didn't talk about that.
Yeah, we'll get, yeah, we'll come back to that. The buffer width of the property line, 10 feet is required, 2.7 feet is existing on one side, and it's not clearly denoted on the other. It's all existing nonconforming conditions. We're not proposing to exacerbate them. They're permitted to continue. We'll provide some testimony, but you did ask us to mark out the distance on, I think it's the east side, and we'll take, I think it's the north side? I'm awful when it comes to knowing where I'm at on a page when it comes to northeast, south, or west, but the opposite side that's not marked, we will put on the plan.
You want me to go through the letter, or?
No, no, because I think there's only one more. And then, then that was the loading space size. We have a loading space provided. It's, the size required is 12 by 60. We don't need that here. We propose 12.8 by 20. So if you would just treat those as variances for purposes of testimony, Mr. Hawk, and provide some, the positive and negative criteria associated with those.
Well, as far as the positive criteria, the use of an existing building that's vacant promotes the general welfare to get some activity there, to get it operational and having some life to it. Some of the changes that we've made to the site, some of the curbing and the widening out of the bypass lane to provide a proper distance to get the vehicles through and in cooperation with the fire department. Also, the change in the traffic patterns promotes purpose H, free flow of traffic. And by making some changes to the site and having it operational and beautified will increase the visual environment, purpose I. They all are on the positive side. From a negative perspective on the negative one criteria or prong, this development is not out of character with the area. A lot of the sites in this area have a lot of pavement. They have well over the amount of pavement that we have or impervious coverage. We're approximately 2/3 of what we're allowed to have as far as impervious coverage, being a little less than 50% when 75% is allowed. A lot of the developed sites, I think on both the north side and the south side, have well in excess of that 50%, so we're definitely not out of character with the way the sites are developed and the amount of pavement that they have and building coverage. There's definitely no impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance also from that same perspective, in that our site is unusual in that we have that large patch of woods in the back, and that allows us to have three times the amount of landscaping that, or landscaped area that's required on the site. So this site is, benefits from that, and the area benefits from that. And like I said, we're at 2/3 of the impervious coverage. We could actually have another 20,000 square feet of pavement and still meet the ordinance with 75% coverage. So for those reasons, because of the benefits outweighing the detriments, based on the pooling case where you can take the overall development benefits and weigh them against the negatives, the C variances can be granted under C2 in this case.
What do you think?
Write a testimony, just point out that if you did develop another 20,000 square feet, you would have a major stormwater problem.
We would. But you could always do under pavement, stormwater management, but that's expensive.
Per water problem.
Yeah.
But you have, you have no intentions of developing that?
No. Trying to utilize the site in its current condition as much as possible.
Fred, do you have anything else with respect to your letter?
Well, I'd like to run through the letter.
Sure.
If that's, are we finished with the plan?
I have no, nothing further from Mr. Hawk, unless anybody has any other questions.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Fred.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just give me a second, I'm looking up. So I apologize for the long letter. And we've gone through everything on page two, page three. Thank you for going through that. That was good. Page four was where we really, early on, went through what we can touch, what we can't touch. However, I think all the items I've called up were in item two, speak to hours of operation, prohibited consumption. We talked about signage, the security. We went through that in great detail, and the emergency generator, emergency power, site management, which we've heard a lot of testimony on in the product, how they dispose of it, et cetera. Odor, again, can't control odor without power, and then the outside generators, mechanical equipments, and we've heard more than sufficient information. They're going to revise the plans to show where, where this emergency generator will be installed and what type of emergency generator. The next item, three, was just regarding, it's unfortunate you did not, or were not requested, and I think you got caught into a transition between personnel. Some of these issues, this letter could have been much shorter. We would typically work it out with the engineer. Issues such as stormwater, we still don't know what, what is going on out there. We don't know what's existing out there. Site lighting, clearly there's, there are issues with regard to the site lighting plan. Some lights out there are missing the heads. As I mentioned before, the draping lights along the back of the building, those things need to be addressed. The buffering, when the property was purchased, the buffering and the landscaping along the front of the site was removed, just from aerial photographs. It's apparent that that took place. I believe they're laying in a big pile in the back of the site. So that's something that we need to go through, and we will go through it further, but, and I just go through, and then the issue with the drive-through, we could have gone through those, had we gone through site plan, or else I would have identified those. The next item was regarding sidewalks. There are a couple of sections of the ordinance that speak about sidewalks. One speaks about new developments, one speaks about in the redevelopment zone, and this one says, and it's related to streets, curbs, and gutters. Our site plan has a standard, and that says, and by the way, it includes everything in the subdivision section. So this is in the subdivision section, where really, it's giving the board, it's giving the board the authority to say, do I want it on one side of the road or two sides of the road? If it was residential, you wouldn't have that authority. It's dictated by the RSIS, but in this case, it may be a little loose, but the question is, do you want sidewalk along, along this busy road? And is it appropriate? I'm not sure. I did not ride down further into Moorestown to see if there's sidewalk there.
There is pedestrian traffic there. There is a stop sign there. There is a supermarket there. I think it's very appropriate. Would you have any objection? It's not that big of a.
So we went to the county, the county didn't ask for sidewalk. It's county, you know, county's jurisdiction in, within the right of way, and there's really.
So we don't have authority of that?
So, no, no, I'm not saying that. That's one comment. But the other, the other part of the response is that if you, sidewalk is, we're requesting the waiver, and it's for various reasons, but we are requesting the waiver. I did drive down Linola Road today. I observed both sides. Sidewalk on the office's side, starting several properties down out towards 41. On this side, there's no sidewalk anywhere from Route 38 to the other side of the driveway of the doctor's offices next door. There's a tiny stretch, then there's no sidewalk. Then ironically, there's sidewalk next to Acme, next to the side of the Acme's building, and then no sidewalk until you hit the Dunkin' Donuts site. So it's sporadic along this stretch, but we're not really encouraging, you know, there's no residential uses around here where pedestrians would be utilizing this, you know, walking around to any of the shopping centers or utilizing the site. And if you're encouraging pedestrian access along any of the frontage here, then you're also encouraging them to cross this busy, in this, in this, in this location, it's a five-lane roadway. So it's, it's a safety and security concern.
Do you have someone that can testify to that? I think you're testifying. I can testify.
No, I can make legal argument, but yeah.
But there's public transportation there. It's robust public transportation on Route 38. There, there's a bus stop a couple lots down next to the, the Acme. So I can tell you, there's a, there's a fair amount of pedestrian traffic all over Maple Shade, all over, whether there's sidewalks there or not. You're not going to encourage anyone to walk if you put a sidewalk there, and you're not, you know, you're not discouraging them if you don't. So they're going to walk either way. This is a fairly big project. You know, you're coming into, into the town, and it's a, I would think, in comparison to everything else you're spending, it's a, it's a minor expense, and you don't want to give that. Talk to your clients.
So that would be a waiver. A waiver would be required if the applicant's requesting not to install.
I mean, if someone else comes in next door, we ask them to do it. Who knows? Maybe we'll have sidewalks in town.
Can I ask a question? Because you just brought up a newest structure. So the newest structure right there would be PJs, is it Ponderosa, PJs? And then you have a bank slash?
Ocean Bank.
Do they have sidewalks?
They only have sidewalk along the Route 38 frontage from the corner to a pedestrian access into the site.
Why don't they have it on?
There's no sidewalk on Linola Road there.
For Ocean?
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the board.
But that's on your structure, right?
That's new.
Yes. When was that built?
Seventeen, eighteen, seventeen or eighteen.
And, and then there is Starbucks, and that has a sidewalk.
And buses run, you know, people work at the mall, buses run on Main Street, buses run on Linola, buses run on Route 38. There's a lot of commercial activities back there. A ton of people that work back there may not have automobiles and may use public transportation.
All right. Silently communicating with my client, he'll agree to install the sidewalk.
Next items, next, next items, all right, five, six, seven, and eight. These were actually taken and, as Mr. Engineer or maybe Cheryl, you or someone else had pointed out, they're within the redevelopment zone only. This is not in the redevelopment zone. However, the reason, one of the reasons, and it's not an excuse for me, is that the application itself had asked for one of these variances in the redevelopment zone of Linola Road, Route 73, Route 38. So while five, six, and seven aren't applicable, they are referenced in other sections of our code, which for some reason are more stringent than our redevelopment zone. And I want, we'll go through that in a few seconds, and I'll try to rush through these. However, I don't want to gloss over these because I have other comments other than the fact that a variance was required.
Open public meeting.
Sorry.
Stuff.
Sorry. So item five on page, page five, the applicant should coordinate with the Maple Shade Township Fire Official. That's a requirement of any approval that we give here, whether it's a candy store or whatever, we have the fire official. And then I speak about, the second paragraph of number five was the circulation plan. Graphically, it has a turning template, and we spoke about those issues, the concerns, 20-foot wide aisle, we've been through this. However, we realized that there's 10 feet or less in that drive aisle, and we say that the plan should be revised, or the fire marshal will approve it as is, or even maybe the police department. Six, really, spoke to sidewalks, and again, that was for the redevelopment area. As I mentioned on the others, everything's covered somewhere else in our ordinance that was covered in this redevelopment code. Item number seven was regarding the additional buffering, and I can wait until we go to 20567, which is, again, the same thing. It actually requires more buffering than we've required in our redevelopment zone. Again, I'm not sure why, but it's more, it's less stringent than the rest of our ordinances. We've identified, we're identifying, showing the plans, the width of that buffer to the Ponderosa, as you mentioned, to the, the second building for PJs. And item number eight, again, while I spoke about outdoor lighting, and it gave us issues that said they should comply with light pollution issues. Well, that's just a nice ordinance in our redevelopment. The reality. The reality is, 20567, and we're going to get to in a second, is our lighting code, and that talks about the same thing, light pollutions, nuisances, and all that. So, while they were referenced in error, they are appropriate. And I go on to say, the site lighting is required to be revised, there are issues with the lighting plan, we need to go through that, they've agreed. Cheryl will work with us on that and make sure we're compliant. Currently, if you've been out to the site, we have some lights that shine this way, some lights shine this way, some lights shine that way, some are this way, some have missing heads on them. Not sure how the numbers came up with or for what fixture, but we'd like to see the details on the plan for the photometrics. Again, exactly what we're going to get, we should see on the plan. And I make that akin to site security, it's not just inside the building, it's also outside the building. It's site security. So, I don't know if you want to tie, and Cheryl, this is up to your group or the board, tie the parking lot lighting to site security, I don't know. Do you have a generator? You probably do that, but I'll leave that to the board. Nine is 20535H, and that talks about the refuse storage, and we've heard testimony on that. The other thing I would ask is, does that mean recycling too? I always ask about recycling.
Yes.
So, everything's stored in the building, there's not carts outside, or...
That's correct. Mr. Cook to testify, there'll be two 96-gallon rollouts, one trash, one recycled.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, okay.
He was going to keep them in the HVAC room, I think.
Correct, they'll be kept in the mechanical room, the name that escaped me earlier. Rolled out when the trash comes, the private hauler comes, rolled back in.
Great.
Okay, thanks. Fred, if I could stop you for a second, so the site lighting and the lighting of the building, I think should all play a part in the security of the facility, I think that's...
We've already agreed to work with Mr. Tork to clean up the lighting around the site.
And with the lighting...
There's two competing issues here, there's security lighting, and then there's your requirements for downward lighting and, you know, maintaining light levels, certain light levels, but not exceeding certain light levels. It kind of all goes together. So, the plan, the existing lighting does have issues, as you noted, and we've agreed to work that out with it. Yep?
And I just bring the call to attention, if you look at the lighting, the outside wiring, very unusual. Just, we'll check that. Signage, thank you, you have the color renderings, you're complying with the existing standards in our code, no issues with site signage. Item number 11 was the parking in the ADA, there are a couple little issues with regard to some items there, and the applicant, I guess, will work with us to make sure it complies with ADA, with regard to landings and slopes and stuff like that. Item 12 was the 15-foot-wide, one-way drive aisle. And that is 205-67E, I try to keep these in order. So, that would be a variance. Currently, I say there's 10 feet that exist between the islands, and a variance is required. So, again, I'll rely on us hearing from Mr. Kerr tomorrow or the following day, when he gets back and catches up to his emails, where we are with regard to that. But, that would be a variance requirement. Item 13 is all-street parking and the buffer requirements. And again, you've agreed to work with us and our landscape architect with buffering requirements. 14 also speaks to buffers and the requirements, again, this would be a variance. Minimum of 10 feet wide when adjacent to a street line, and a minimum of 15 feet wide when adjacent to property lines. Here, I'll go back to where I said there were some references to our redevelopment zone. They require a five-foot buffer in our redevelopment zone. This requires a 15-foot-wide buffer. So, our typical codes are more stringent than our redevelopment codes. So, again, 15-foot-wide buffer adjacent to property lines, it's an existing site. We don't know what the one dimension is, but you'll provide that. And with that, I don't know, especially along the Ponderosa, the old Ponderosa is what we know it as, could a fence be installed instead of a buffer? To typically fencing, landscaping, birmingham addresses buffering. So, I don't know if it's something that you would want to see, rather than see the parking bumpers and then the Ponderosa, and then, that's up to the board, what they would want to deal with. It is a variance required, it's an existing condition. But, we have a use coming in now that, I don't want to prejudice in any way, but if kids are next door or something, we don't want that co-mingling or any ability for somebody to come over onto this site.
But, say it's a privacy fence, wouldn't that be a security issue? I'm just saying, I'm not the expert on that, and I understand you guys are going to address it. So, if you put a fence and it's a privacy fence, no one can see behind it. And so, that's a consideration.
At a minimum, maybe something low-growing and narrow, we could get in there, but they're going to work with us on that. But, I've raised the fence just for the boards.
But, if I'm not mistaken, Fred, that Ponderosa building is not really being used for anything, but stored for PJ wheel lanes.
Well, I...
In the back?
It's been utilized in the back.
When I'm...
No, they have a different park.
When I'm advising the board, it's not for today, it's for when that Ponderosa becomes something else. So, what we want it to look like and what we're trying to achieve. So, that's my goal, is just to see what you folks would want to do. The next one was sufficient lighting, I mentioned all the lighting issues, we'll go through that with the applicant's engineer, and they've agreed to do that. Loading, obviously, the car size of any van or a van of some sort, or a standard car. Cheryl, is that what the testimony was? There's no need for any loading.
We have a loading space, it's just undersized.
Right, it's undersized, yeah.
We meet the requirement to have a loading space, it's just...
And deliveries are by van?
Transit van, pickup, cash pickup by a garden-sized truck, and then... They're really Sprinter vans, is what they are, so...
So, again, that would be variance for the size. The size, typically, they're talking about loading for tractor-trailer. Stormwater management, the stormwater basin, from aerials, it looked like the back, there's a depressed curb, there's an inlet that's full of water that's overflowing on the parking lot, it's clogged. There were some references to cleaning out a piece of fabric on top of it. We don't know what's there, it's not identified on the plan, so I'm asking if they show that. There are no roof drains coming off of this building anywhere. That means they're going underground somewhere. And although I may be perceived as causing some trouble, I'm trying to prevent that from backing up, making a swimming pool on the roof, and then going down through the middle of the building. So, I think it's something that has to be clearly identified, cleaned, shown on the plans, and there has to be some management process for that, so... Restriped the asphalt, the parking in the rear, and there were seven or eight new spaces proposed at the curvature of the rear of the site. And to make that fit in, they put striped islands on each side, because a car would project, and the space projects 18 feet from... They did a striping island, that you typically see. I had made a recommendation that they consider, from environmental standpoint, less impervious cover, less stormwater runoff, and even if it's just lawn there, that that be considered to be curved. It would also protect the side of the car, or however you want to look at it. But, anywhere that I see there's an opportunity to make an environmental impact on a site, I certainly would want to try to do that. And, like I said, striped islands are in a lot of places, but that's something that you should definitely consider. Also, the basins have to be restripped, we talked about that. And I'm almost through this. Sanitary sewer, we heard that you are connected to the sanitary sewer, thank you for that testimony. Testimony required for the site, information to traffic engineer, we heard that, there's definitely sufficient parking. We went through the same stuff with the IT, there's not going to be an issue with this site. Surveying site plan, I think one of the first things that the engineer spoke to was, in the old days, your property went to the center line of the road, that doesn't occur anymore. I called Danielle at the county, we went through this, and she said that they would address it when it came through. But, you're sending a letter of no interest from them?
All righty, yeah.
So, the deeds would have to be revised, and...
But, can I address that?
Mm-hmm, sure.
I can't revise the deed. The deed, in order to revise the deed, I'm creating a gore in the chain of title, and I can't do that. So, if there's a dedication to the county that's been made, that's reflected, then we can update the survey, and we'll do that, and we'll pull that back.
I spoke to, this is why I'm wondering, I didn't have a copy of the letter of no interest from the county. I spoke to her Thursday or Friday, and she said that when it comes in, when she sees it...
She signed a letter?
Yeah, she probably has 500 applications on her list. When she sees it, that she would address it with their survey crew, so it's either just an oversight, or... I just want to point it out that...
Yeah, I'll coordinate with her, I just, you know, in New Jersey, we have a public policy of not clouding the chain of title.
I understand.
So, if we did a quick claim deed to extract that portion from the existing legal description for the site, I'm creating a gore, which is a problem.
This is more of a survey issue than anything.
Okay, so, yeah, and we'll confirm with the surveyors, I did talk to Mr. Atkins today. They did have the benefit of a title report, their survey says they didn't, but they did. I think they forgot to update that note, general note. But, we'll take it back to them and have them take another look at it, too.
Thank you.
And then I'm sure at some point Danielle will reach out.
Just trying to right some old wrongs, that's all.
Yeah, I hear you, I just, I can do it in any way that doesn't create a cloud on the chain of title.
Understood, okay, thank you. Twenty-two, we spoke at tenozium, the only thing I add is lighting is under the canopy that you're keeping. We have all kinds of lights, we have recessed cans, I have these ugly lenses that stick down. There's all kinds of various lights that change every time. So, you'll provide some kind of lighting that's consistent for all the drivethrus. Because hopefully, it'll be soft lighting, a can that's recessed.
I don't know what it looks like out there, so I can't, we'll work with you to address that.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's one thing I haven't seen, is the lighting under the canopy.
Okay. The 23 was the fire official, which we've mentioned before. 24, I put in every letter, which is the affordable housing obligation, and I'm not sure where that lies. I'll leave that with the tax assessor, but I pointed out to you that there may be an obligation, and you agree, if there's an obligation, you'll take care of that.
Site-wide non-residential development fee will apply to any improvements, so whatever that fee calculates out to will be paid.
Type of vehicles anticipated, we went through all that. Public sewer, we spoke about, I have a duplicate there. Landscaping, just to point out, the landscaping that is proposed on this site are 17 shrubs that are really, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the red twig dogwood. It's relatively low, 30 inches of height, and eight ornamental brasses. So, there's not a lot being proposed here. And the last items, I think, landscaping, to utilize native species, again, that's anything that is proposed, make sure it's native, not invasive. The existing shrubs that are along the property line, somebody cut recently, and that's the stuff we see in the back. They're all compact inkberries, which are extremely invasive to our area. They asked for some substitutions, they've agreed to work with us. Regarding the existing buffering that is along these property lines, there are vines and poison ivy and all the normal things that we see on sites that haven't been occupied for seven years. And that's where we are with this site. So, you'll clean all that up for us, and... Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless anyone has questions.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Fred?
Could you just point to the ones we have to address? You mentioned a couple of areas.
Oh, okay.
I'll mention the variances when I go to someone.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Next guy.
This time, I'd like the meeting to the public, anyone from the public, wish you to address the board on this application, may do so, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Simonsek, 17 Everbrook Avenue, Maple Shade, New Jersey. So, just up here, just to make some things to be put on the record. First, I don't know how a business of this magnitude got past the site board. I don't know who made the decision. I think it would have been in their benefit to come to the site board. It would have saved you people a lot of time sitting here tonight. So, that's the first concern that I have. In fairness to all the other businesses and all the other people in this town. Now, being that that said, to address a couple things that seem to be an issue. One of the things is, you know, the access. The statement was made that nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed, as we require.
Unfortunately, change happens every day in the world. And just to make a note to the town, to the board, the one big change for access for the fire department is our ladder truck. The old ladder truck was a lot smaller, the new ladder truck is bigger. And the boards, as far as I see it, are first to protect the township's citizens with their safety, the safety of the people that are coming into the building to participate in the business. And these processes, as much as we don't like them, or they seem to be a pain, also benefit the owners, because it mitigates liability later on down the line. So, as far as the fire official goes in this township, the fire official doesn't know anything about the sizes of our trucks and never driven them. My suggestion to this board is to put everything to bed, and numbers are nice, and engineers, there's nothing against anybody here, take the trucks out and see how they perform on the site. All right, that's the easiest way. 10 feet or whatever, it ain't cutting it. That ladder truck's 60 foot long, all right? So, that is a recommendation moving forward for everything, and I'm learning some things sitting out there. But, moving forward, placement of apparatus for fires is very important, all right? So, that is one of the things that I recommend that happens before anything moves forward with this point in the process. The other thing that was brought up was the containment for the dumpsters, for the trash. To think that a business or anything in this world isn't going to generate any trash, whether it's inside the building or out, is ludicrous. The township has an ordinance with that, and it's clear. We're going through a lot of issues right now with the township, with the ordinances, and as fairness to everything else that's going on in this town, I think they should be made to put the trash containment area in, whether they use it or not. That's their decision. But, there are just a couple of things, and I think the other things kind of were addressed. But, I don't know if I'll get my answer on who made the decision to short these people the benefit of the site plan, but, you know, it seems to me sitting out there that it's just, you know, chaos, because it wasn't discussed before. I think that the chairmans of those boards would have appreciated that to happen. And my personal feeling is, we're trying to rush this through. This is the first one in Maple Shade, let's get it right. Let's take the time to look at everything. And in doing that, it protects them later on, whether they want to open right-of-way or not. I get it, I understand it, time is money. But, if they would have came, they might have saved some time in the beginning by coming to this site board. So, I just wanted those things on record. The fire chief should be the one that's going out, looking at that and taking the trucks out there, not the fire official. He's in charge of looking at the inside of the buildings and all the things that come with people moving in and out. The fire chief is going to ultimately be the one that's in charge of the operations and dealing with all that if something was to happen out there, not the fire official. So, don't confuse what their jobs are or what their purposes are, they're two different things. And if you want to get it right, the fire chief and the fire department is the one to talk to, not the fire official.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public, wish you to address the board, at this time? Is there a motion to close the public portion? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Back to the board, Nick?
Yes, I'm gonna, there was a lot of things that said that will be done, so I'm trying to try to include them. If I misstate them, or anyone has any questions, please let me know. All right, the applicant is seeking a minor site plan approval and conditional use approval for the proposed change in use of the subject property from a vacant bank to a retail cannabis use. Subject property is located at 380 South Linola Road in the business development zone. The proposed use for the cannabis retail is a conditional use in the business development zone. The applicant seeks a bulk C variance for a parking buffer to the property line where 2.7 feet exists and 15 feet is required, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use. A landscape buffer to the property line where 1.6 feet exists and 5 feet is required pursuant to the township code, again, another pre-existing use. And then, a bulk variance related to the drive aisle where 10 feet is existing and 15 feet is required pursuant to the township code. Tonight, we are looking for a vote to approve or deny the minor site plan and the conditional use approval for the change of use with the conditions agreed upon during the meeting. The conditions I have, I've written down, are that the applicant has agreed to work with the township for lighting, landscaping, and the ADA parking issues that are remaining, to clean out and maintain the stormwater drain, to work with the fire chief regarding the bypass lane and review and approval of that, signage of a no-consumption on the site to be, work with the township on placement, size, and anything else. The closure of the fourth lane, that it will not be used as part of the business, and that they would provide the license from the CRC whenever it's received. With that, I submit the application for a vote by the board. With that, I submit the application for vote by the board.
I'm sorry, there was also one, was it the sidewalks? They agreed to the sidewalks?
Well, that was a waiver, so that's required by the ordinance, correct?
Right.
So there's no waiver request anymore, so that's part of it.
And the buffer.
The emergency generator?
That's also required, isn't it not?
I'm sorry.
Isn't that required?
It's required as per the ordinance.
Right.
Anything you didn't mention that's required, that they have to do?
Right, if it's in the ordinance, I'm not, I'm not enshrining as condition because it's already required and there's no waiver for it. Yeah, I did mention the buffer variance for the where it's located and that they will work with township specifically Fred for lighting, landscaping and the ADA parking.
Okay. Okay. Anyone from the board have any other questions or comments? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Susan, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bertel?
Approve.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Approve. Ms. Rathgab?
Approve.
Mr. Reeves?
Approve.
Ms. Teller, Mayor Tellerico?
Yes.
Ms. Wallace?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zaradnik?
Yes.
Deputy Chairman Mantello?
Yes.
And Sharon Fletcher?
Yes.
Approve her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. We're actually working on the, another site that you've issued a resolution to support for, so I will be sure we hit this grab before we.
Resolutions.
So it won't be three hours?
Yeah. Thank you.
You too. Thank you for your time and your indulgence. It's probably longer than what you're used to. I'm used to it.
Good luck.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Education.
And look, and check out the Bruce throughs. They're funny. The Bruce throughs.
Go to North Carolina, Justin.
Google it.
We'll be down there again. I'm going to have to check.
Folks, we just have a few items left. Resolutions. Resolution 2025-PB-05 granting site plan waiver and change of use to Belzana Kolenovik, Block 91, Lot 3.01 on the tax map of the township of Maple Shade. Resolution 2025-PB-06 granting site plan waiver and change of use to the Voice Studio LLC, Block 126.01, Lot 4 on the tax map of the township of Maple Shade.